The planning board, planning board meeting of July 8th, 2020, starting at 6:30. We'll take a roll call. Clark Brewer is present. Next, Eric Potter.
Present.
Okay, Amy Glassmeyer.
Present.
Paul Grady.
Present.
And Paul Colery.
Present.
And our newest member, Tom Callahan.
Present.
Okay, welcome aboard, Tom. Congratulations on getting on the planning board.
Thank you.
So the first, the first item on our agenda is planning board member comments. Does anyone have any comments? Okay, hearing none, then we'll go right to planning board reorganization. We have to pick a chairman on an annual basis, as well as a vice chairman and a clerk. Is any, are any of the, I've been chairman for five years. Are any other members of the planning board willing to chair for the next year?
I thought it was a nominations process.
I'm asking who's willing to, to chair.
That isn't a nomination process, but I'll make a nomination if that's all right.
I think that's fair. I think that's a second question to Clark's first, but I think that's fair.
Is, is anyone willing to chair?
I'm willing to chair.
That's Amy Glassmeyer. Is someone willing to nominate Amy Glassmeyer for chairing the planning board?
I'm willing to nominate Amy.
Okay, then we'll ask for a second for that nomination.
I'll second that.
Okay, Eric. Eric seconded it, then. I would recommend that Amy Glassmeyer not vote for herself and that Paul Colery vote on all the positions on the board.
May I ask a question on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
And I thought that the, the board member is entitled to vote. I read that, and if that's a recommendation.
Yeah, all board members are, are entitled to vote, but we have an associate member, and I don't think it's, I don't think it's necessary for Amy Glassmeyer to vote for herself.
But in, that's the vote, Clark, I think she.
We have a, we have a nomination, and it's been seconded. All those in favor, starting with Clark Brewer, aye. Eric Potter.
Aye.
Okay, Paul Grady.
Aye.
Paul Colery.
Aye.
And Tom Callahan.
Aye.
Okay, and it's unanimous. Amy, you are the new chairman. If it's all right with you, I'll continue with a vice chairman. Do we have any volunteers for vice chairing in the offhand chance that Amy Glassmeyer can't make a meeting or run a meeting? Tom, would you be willing to do that? I know you're new, but Amy usually attends all the meetings.
It helps because I chaired boards before, that's fine.
Yeah. Would you be willing to do that?
Sure.
Vice chair of the planning board?
Sure.
Okay, and then will, will someone nominate Tom Callahan for vice chair?
I nominate Tom Callahan for vice chair.
Was that Grady?
Yes, it was.
Okay, and a second?
I second it.
That was Glassmeyer?
Amy, yeah.
Okay, same thing. I'd prefer that Tom didn't vote for himself in our associate member vote. I'll start. Clark Brewer is aye. Paul Grady?
Aye.
Eric Potter?
Aye.
Paul Colery?
Aye.
Amy Glassmeyer?
Aye.
I think it's unanimous. Okay, one more position is clerk. Paul, you have a good, strong, Paul Grady, you have a good, strong sounding voice. Would you be willing to clerk on the planning board for the next year? That's reading public notices at the beginning of each meeting.
By all means.
Okay, then will someone nominate Paul Grady for clerk?
I'll do that.
Okay, who is that?
Tom.
Me.
Okay, was it Tom or Amy? Tom, you, you nominated Paul Grady?
Yes.
And a second, Glassmeyer, was that you?
I didn't say anything, but I would say that I would vote for Paul Grady as the.
Just second it. You just second the nomination.
Sorry, I, I got distracted reading the.
That's fine. Okay, then we've got a nomination, and it's been seconded. Clark Brewer votes aye. Amy Glassmeyer?
Votes aye.
Tom Callahan?
Vote aye.
Eric Potter?
Aye.
And Paul Colery?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Then I'll hand over the imaginary gavel to Amy Glassmeyer. You can take over his chair. Good luck.
Well, thank you very much. First off, I'd like to say that on behalf of everyone, and I don't think this is, I have to worry about saying this, is that you have done a fine job over five years. It's been a lot of work. You've had some really tough decisions to make, and you've been a great leader. So now I have a, a big set of shoes I have to fill, and I look forward to the fact that I'll be calling you on a regular basis to make sure that I am actually following in your footsteps. Clark, Eric?
So, so I, I just wanted to piggyback on that, Amy. I think it's important for the citizens to go acid, and for everybody on this board to know, I'm the last remaining member from, from when I started, you know, just how valuable of a, of a chairman Clark has been. And I think the town, the citizens of Goacid, and everybody on the planning board really, really should applaud him and congratulate him for the time and effort that he's put in. You know, really, this isn't a, this isn't a paying position. This is a volunteer position. Amy, you know, you, I congratulate you for taking the responsibility even going to that position. But I, I wanted to be noted that, that Clark's been the chairman for, for a number of years now, not by his own choice, really, but by fact that no one really ever wanted to volunteer and take that, that role. And, and Clark, I thank you. I've learned a lot since I started on this planning board. I think the citizens here in town have a, a certain amount of indebtedness to you, because we, we need people like you to be actively involved with, with town politics and with, with, with taking part in boards like this, to make it a better place to live, and a better place to, to have a community, and, and make this overall someplace where our kids could grow up. And, and you've done more than, than most people ever will over my five years, never mind the last 20 that you've been, been involved. So I think the planning board is, is, is lucky to have you. It was, was lucky to have you as chairman, as a chairman, maybe lucky to have you chairman in the future, and, and the town itself is lucky to have had you be as involved as you've been throughout the years with, with making sure that the Goacid is the place that we want to live in. And, and I, I don't want that to go unnoticed, because being, volunteering my time, I know what it takes just to make the meetings, and owing the time that you've put in, it's admirable, it's honorable, and, and everyone's lucky to, to have had you do what you've done over the years. So, that's all.
Oh, I'll second that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You've done a good job, Clark.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clark, for leading us in the past year, and looking forward to the years ahead.
That sounds good. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Clark.
All right. Well, I have to tell you, I feel like I've just gotten myself in a rowboat, and I, I have oars, but I could use a sail. So I hope that in this first maiden voyage in this role, that I will do a good job, but I also have to say that I wasn't necessarily expecting this to happen, so I'm, I'm going to stutter a little bit, and I'm going to rely one more time on Clark making sure that what we do and what we say is in accordance with the state of Massachusetts laws that bind us as planning board members, that we rely upon our staff, that has produced the information necessary for us to consider each of these issues, and that we have a lot of work to do today. And I'd like to see us get through the first part of it, so that we can get on to the public hearing, which is scheduled for 7:00 PM, and I can guess that we're going to be a little bit late for that right now. So let me first begin by asking for us to approve the minutes. And, and Jen, is there, is there something that we physically need to touch or see in order to approve minutes, or will this just be us acknowledging that there are minutes to be posted, and you'll be doing that?
No, actually, I'm going to be sending you quite a few sets of minutes with everything going on. I've been working on them, but we have two from before COVID, and then the rest. So at our next meeting, it'll be listed, so you know, and you'll be, you'll be emailing them well in advance, so you can read them.
All right, great. So then that will be something we take up in the next time we meet. The next topic is, are there any issues which were not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of this meeting, but for which the members of the planning board would like to have us address?
I have a question for Lauren. That's okay.
I'm here.
Okay, fine. The, they, just to be sure, sorry, Lauren, A. James Lane, that's just off the agenda for tonight, right?
Correct. We received a continuation request, so when we get to that item, we will ask of the board open and continue to a date and time certain, but they have requested continuation.
I printed everything up in my office, and when I left the office today, I didn't bring it with me, so please bear with me. I apologize.
That's great. All right, thank you.
Thanks so much.
All right, great. Are there any other items of information that anyone wants to raise? All right, without that, let's move on. A regular business includes six items. There are, there are spaces that are about five minutes apart, and then they have a lengthy space left at the end of the meeting to begin the consideration of the Harbor Village Business Overlay Special Permanent Site Plan Review. For the citizens that are listening to this discussion, we're going to move quickly through the items that we can, but we will not shortshirk the, the necessary discussions that will hope to make it clear to people what we're working on at this point. So the first item of business is an A and R, an approval not required under subdivision control law application, and number 1014468 King Street, 470 and 476 King Street, and 44 Showfield Road.
Hi, I'm Paul Maribito from Ross Engineering Company. I'd like to start by congratulating you, Amy, on your new position. It'll be very interesting. I've, I've been there.
Terrifying might be a better way of putting it.
This is a fairly straightforward A and R. The applicant, Linda Pratt.
Pardon me?
Own the existing condominium at 470 and 476 King Street. Parcel A, which is owned in a buddy lot owned by a separate property owner, has a driveway turnaround area, and the owner of the, of Lot 1 is shown on the plan, Justin Walson Home, has agreed to convey parcel A, just 352 square feet, to the condominium association that's owned by the Prats. And in return, the Prats who also own the lot at the top of the plan, Lot 2, they created parcel B, which will be conveyed to Justin Walser Home, and that's the intent of this plan to do the two parcel swaps.
So what do you think are the implications for this?
None. The lots are still conforming. What this simply does is it puts that parcel A, which is the turnout for the driveway to 470 and 476, it's simply make, it simply puts that on the same lot as the condominium, as opposed to an easement.
All right. Well, I presume that this issue has come before the board in the past, and I'd like to begin by asking, Clark, do you have any comments on this?
Well, I, I will comment that the, the, the lot on the, the right-hand side, the two family, it is a non-conforming lot by size, but it's made less non-conforming by this, this land swap. The other two lots are conforming by area and frontage, so I don't, I, all three lots have frontage. They appear to have access, and they, they, and two are conforming land area-wise, and, and one is more conforming. Those are my only comments.
All right. So based on past precedent, precedent, let me just step back for a minute and ask, are any other members of the board like to speak about this particular project?
No.
All right, with silence, and I will presume that, that there's no further discussion. Clark, have you seen this project in the past?
No.
All right. So there isn't any recent precedent or issues that we have in the last five years that you, you can think of?
Not on this one. It's just a relatively minor land swap. It's definitely not a subdivision. So I think you could ask the board to vote to endorse.
All right. So with that recommendation from Clark, I asked the board to endorse the approval not required under the subdivision control law application, A and R 1014468 King Street, 470, 476 King Street, and 44 Showfield Road.
I'll make a motion to endorse.
I just have one quick question. Do, on these, are plans, we put not a buildable parcel on them, or does it matter?
Note, six and seven indicate that parcel A and B are not buildable lots, and they should be combined with the respective lots, shown on the plan.
So they kind of like all merge together, right?
Yes.
I'll second Paul Grady's motion.
All in favor, please state your name and your vote.
Paul Grady, aye.
Eric Potter, aye.
Tom Callahan, aye.
Clark Brewer, aye.
Amy Glassmeyer, aye. Thank you very much. Let's move on to the next item. Thank you. Paul Grady, did you want to say something?
No, I saw Lauren panned up.
Oh, I see. Oh, okay. Sorry, Lauren, I, you're, I've got two files up, and it, sorry, there we go. Lauren?
Thank you. I would just request that the board would make a motion to allow the chair to sign on behalf of the board for this vote, given the complications of getting various signatures in this time.
I'll make.
This is practice we've done before.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
Everyone vote individually, please, starting with Clark?
Clark Brewer, aye.
Paul Colery? Sorry.
Paul Colery, aye.
Paul Colery wouldn't, wouldn't vote as associate member unless there was a missing member.
Okay, thank you for that. Paul Grady?
Aye.
Tom Callahan?
Aye.
Amy Glassmeyer, aye. All right, item number two. I'm not sure exactly who to refer to about item at the 6:35 minute, we're almost 20 minutes behind, other than to say that we were going to engage in an informal discussion of 580 Jerusalem Road Large Home Review Update. Clark, recognizing that this was undertaken during your time, could you speak to this?
Yeah, Amy called me about a project on the corner of Jerusalem Road and Blackrock Lane, saying she thought it was too tall. She used her phone to check, and she thought it was over 40 feet tall, and she asked me to take a look at it. She also forwarded the plans that were on file, and I did. I took a look at it, and I noticed two, two main problems with it. It's a house that's under construction. One was the, the, the set of plans was, that was on file with the billing department was preliminary, and it had a bogus 3,418 square foot calculation that appears to have been from another project. The actual square footage, because I put it into AutoCAD, and I did area takeoffs of the square footage that would be relevant to a large home review, the residential gross floor area, or RGFA, and came up with 5,200 square feet. And it also looked like it was taller in the back. It looks like it had walkout, and they raised the existing grade. So while it's hard to get to the 40-foot height, I think that it, there may be a problem there. So I did, I did communicate the issue with the billing inspector. He put the, a stop work order on the project, and then told the owner to submit documents required for a large home review. Apparently, they're doing that, and presumably we'll see that soon.
All right.
That's all I have.
And also, I have to say, thank you, Clark, for doing the analysis, because it does take literally that level of effort in order to understand on a site-by-site basis what's happening, and it requires technical, technical skills that not everybody actually has. Paul Grady, and then Eric Potter?
This question's from my own education. Now, this didn't come up before planning, if I'm not mistaken. So how are these allowed to get through? That's, and again, this is from my own education. I'm not poking a hole at anybody. I'm just curious. I'd like to know, so I could, this is for my, for me to learn.
Well, it looks like it was a mistake, that the owner took a preliminary set of plans that the architect of the project hadn't finished, and either knowingly or unknowingly submitted them to the billing inspector, so that it appeared that the square footage was not, was not large enough to require a large home review.
Thank you, Clark.
Okay, Eric, and then Tom Callahan?
So that just goes, my, the point I was going to make with, after Clark explained it, is, is I think maybe perhaps an inherent problem here is there's, there's no, there's, I don't think there's, and Karis, maybe you can help us out with this, that is there anything in place that, that allows us to penalize, or, or, or put some sort of, you know, financial, you know, fine on, 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 on people, when these things happen? I mean, everybody makes mistakes. So we, we all understand that if you have 100 large home review applications, or 100 large home reviews that come before the town, you know, 5% or something like that, it's not going to all work out, right? Nobody goes 10 for 10 in life, or we'd all be in great shape. But in situations where there, there is suspected intentional, and I'm not saying it's, this is the case here, it could have just been a mistake. In, in situations where there's a suspected misrepresentation that was intentional, is there any sort of recourse that the town could take?
First of all, sorry, Amy, is, is, Madam Chair, may I answer the question?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. The, showing intent is extremely difficult, almost impossible. So I don't think that that's worth going through the time and the process. I think the point, and the point of fines generally in a regulatory context is to encourage compliance. So here, you have the stop work order issued, and you have the applicant bringing in the correct papers, updating the papers, and working to get the review done and the project in compliance. And that's really the, the best outcome and strategy that you can, that you can employ in situations like this. Where there are egregious violations, and, you know, I've been here for four minutes, and I'm not sure that I've heard facts about an egregious violation, then we could talk about other strategies, but they're going to be very fact-specific. So I don't think there's a, I don't, I'm reluctant to tell you that there's a general rule about that, because it really is going to be fact-dependent.
And, and just, and I'll let, I'll let Tom go after that, but just, just, just to say that unlike the zoning board, right, the building inspector, I believe if there's a zoning violation, that, that, where there's recourse, or you have to force somebody to comply to come into zoning. This is more of a review, where it's not the same as compliance with the zoning bylaws. So if the house is still flying, maybe it's a little, it, it kind of takes away some of the power that the town may have to drop the hammer on someone, I guess, right?
I would have to actually take a look at the large home review bylaw to actually answer that question accurately right now.
Okay.
All right. So Tom Callahan, then Clark Brewer, I'm going to call on you, and then Jen has a, a request, too. Tom?
I was going to ask if we have a fine procedure, and I'm just quickly trying to glance through the bylaw. If we do.
Tom, you might have to turn off your video for us to be able to hear you.
Process. Can you hear me now?
We can. Yes, we can.
I'm sorry. I was going to ask if there was a fine procedure here. I'm just quickly glancing through the bylaws, and this is a site plan review. Whether there is, I'm not finding a quick answer, but I would take a much more skeptical view that this was an innocent mistake. You just don't casually submit plans for another project. This happened to us on the conservation commission years ago, and we did find the person for it. We had a fine procedure. And we have the stop work order we've put in place, but, you know, if we, we do not have a fine process for violations of the bylaw, then we ought to consider putting one in as quickly as possible, because that is an incentive as well that works. And I cannot believe that any professional or any applicant did this by mistake. So I'm going to be a lot more skeptical about this. But I also think it, again, what, what is our process for following up on these things on a daily basis? Or, you know, if somebody comes in, asks for a building permit, gets it, is, is there any inspection going on of what's actually being put up? You know, it shouldn't be for a volunteer board member who casually happens to find it walking by. It's just an ongoing, it's been an ongoing issue, and we need, you know, enforcement, and we need to address it at some point.
Thank you, Tom. Clark, I'd like to ask you, you are intimately familiar with this bylaw.
Well, just, just a couple of comments. We did change the bylaw to allow conditions to our decision after review. So I think there, there's a possibility to get some mitigation from the, from the, the owner developer relative to what they've done. But the real risk, I think there's two risks. One, he's got a building under construction that's, that's got a stop work order, which means a, a financial burden to the, to the owner developer. And the, but the real risk is if the height is determined that it's non-conforming height-wise, there's no variances that are given. There was no hardship for this. There was no hardship for this case. So I think that the, there's a, there's a lot of risk on the part of, of the owner developer just on the height issue. I checked out some of the other zoning issues relative to the, the application. But the, the, the big thing we, we asked for in the zoning update was a certification from a design professional, basically a letter with a stamp that's signed that says, I certify that this is the square footage of this project. Not like, not some preliminary set of drawings from, from a draftsman or anything else. You, a draftsman can design a house, but a, a registered professional would be loath to misrepresent, or the thinking was, they would be loath to misrepresent residential gross floor area, put it in writing and stamp it. And unfortunately, no certification was provided to the billing inspector. The billing inspector didn't, didn't require it. So I think that's, that's where this one fell down.
Yeah.
Where there, there may be other ones, there may be other ones out there. I think that, you know, we all have to be aware of the, of that possibility and keep our eyes and ears open. But maybe send a letter to, to the billing inspector to make sure that he requires any, any, anything that even seems like it's close to a large home, that he get a certification from the professional.
All right. Thank you for that, Clark. I want to recognize Jen and Tom, and then I'd like to make a final statement and have us move on.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and congratulations. I wanted to let you know an update on the, on the application process for the large home review in response to this and also that I met with the building inspector. He could not be here tonight because originally this was not on the agenda and he did have a conflict. The building inspector, as you know, did a cease work order, also met with the architects and both take onus on this. The one, the front sheet on the top was not certified, it was not correct. And they will address that, I believe we'll be hearing them on August 5th. There was a mistake made, intentional or not, it, it doesn't pass a sniff test and we know this. To address it, just what Clark was saying, I worked with our, we went to electronic permitting in 2018 and we've solely been revamping it as we learned the quirks in it and what we can do. We take all applications essentially through the building department electronically. This did not come electronically, but going forward, any new single or two-family home, any new construction will be required that they won't be able to process their application without uploading certified numbers of the RGFA into the application. So they won't even be able to go into the next step without providing what Clark is mentioning. And so we, that's been taking programming. It took me a couple of weeks with them, but we've, we've got a process that we'll be testing in the next couple of weeks to make sure that issue, they cannot be issued or signed off until we have that paper.
That's great to hear, Jen. And when you, this is locked down, so you feel comfortable to show it to us. I'd appreciate it being presented to us as a board so that we understand exactly what you are capable of doing, what we can anticipate going forward. Tom and then Paul, and I really want to wrap this up.
I just have a question for Jen.
No, no, I, Tom, Tom first and then Paul.
Sorry, Tom.
My video is off. I just want to make the observation that the site plan review rule, you have a penalty provision, so point 2K. I would just suggest to you that assessing a penalty for a violation doesn't turn on intent. That's all I'll say, I just want you to know that it's in the bylaw.
Great. Okay, Paul Grady?
No, I have a question for Jen about what she just explained about that new ruling. Jen, does that pertain to anything that's noticed? Like there's a house going up on James Lane that didn't come up in front of the planning board? That's, if it's not, if it's not 40 feet tall, then I'm...
No, this is square footage that would trigger the large home review. So what we're trying to do is capture, and we have had, I know that we, this, this, but we have had a great increase since the planning board. Oh, I'm sorry, Amy, I should have asked you if I could answer that. If they, we've been capturing a lot more large home reviews, but this will capture any new construction. And then beyond that, I'm also going to edit it so it will trigger something when they add an addition. So if that goes over the 30, the 34, but we always have to remember the 10% on the lot as well. So we will, you know, that will have to be a manual review regarding the lot size, but, but the RGFA is, is key. And, and that's, these are change that I think has been a long time coming and we have, um, have a good program with this new online e-permitting. So this, we're going to take advantage of that. And if I may, Madam Chair, I just wanted to mention a technical item that there is something wrong with Facebook and so we cannot link live. So, but this will be replayed on 143 TV at a later date.
Right, right.
Jen, do you say madam or do you say madam? How do you do it?
I say madam.
A madam, that, that, that's pretty elegant, I like that.
That's pretty fancy for someone.
You say tomato or tomato, I mean, you could go all day with that.
I know, I, I know, I say route. I don't know, some people say root, you know?
Let me say the following, which is, I would like to propose that after this new program has been initiated, that we do audit of its effectiveness six months from its maiden voyage to determine the extent to which it's working. And if it's working, that's wonderful. If it's not working, then I would request that we consider reviewing the large home review. There have been recommendations for possible changes in various ways to characterize a large home review. And I would just say, six months out after it's, it's operating and everybody feels comfortable with it, I think we should take a look and see whether or not there needs to be tweaks to the actual bylaw itself. But I will leave that as a final, you know, comment. Any other comments on this item? All right, then let's move on. I have to say that, that in the flurry of all the emails about our board agenda that's changed, I have this nagging feeling that I might have a version that's not the very last one. And so I want to, if I have made a mistake, either Jen or Lauren, would you please correct me?
Hello, Amy. You are on the correct agenda. There was two versions, one previous and one that was revised. And you appear to be following the revised, as I can see.
Okay, although I see that I, I still have the scenic road bylaw listed here as an item and I know that we've moved that, correct? So let me just make sure that we have, we have two public hearings and an informal discussion, which is a review of public hearing process with a special counsel. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I, can I make a decision to move the informal discussion to above the discussion of the public hearings? Or I guess I can't because it's a timed discussion, though we're way off. It just seemed like if we're going to have a discussion about appropriate practices, it might make sense before we take on the two public hearings.
May I respond?
Yes, you may.
Certainly, so thank you. I, whichever order you prefer, it doesn't make a difference. We can, we can move that up. I believe Karis is prepared to speak to that. I will also just note that this public hearing that is next rate, James Lane and Two Pleasant Street, we did receive a request from the applicant to be continued to our August meeting. So this would just be an open and continuation to a time certain. So there will be no deliberation on this.
Okay, great. So, so essentially then we're just staying in the, in the same order and I would ask that that Karis, our, our legal counsel proceed. But before we do that, I would like to just acknowledge Eve Tepper, who is here to support the planning board during the process of the Cohasset Harbor Village Business Overlay. And she will be with us and, and is a resource for all of us going forward. Clark?
Yeah, we need to, we need to vote to continue the 8 James Lane. Let's get that out of the way.
All right. Then Paul, are you ready to, does, does he need to read it first and then?
No, no, it's, it's a continued, it's continued. It's just, we're going to continue it again.
All right. So would someone like to make a motion to continue the public hearing?
Go move.
Seconded.
Please vote, saying your name first.
Clark Brewer, aye.
Paul Grady, aye.
Tom Callahan, aye.
Eric Potter, aye.
Amy Glassmeyer, aye. Lauren?
Um, just to clarify, just, did you intend to make a motion? We did not specify a date and time, so I would recommend to the board that you motion to continue this hearing to August 5th at 6:45 PM.
All right, so back again for a motion to continue the public hearing on 8 James Lane, Two Pleasant Street, to August, did you say 5th?
Yes.
August 5th, do we have a time?
6:45 PM.
45 PM. May I get a vote from the board, beginning with Paul Grady?
Aye.
Tom Callanan?
Tom Callahan, aye.
Clark Brewer?
Aye.
Eric Potter?
Aye.
Amy Glassmeyer, aye. Thank you, thank you Lauren for the technical assist. All right, then let's move on. Clark?
Amy, on, on that one, I would say if, if they're not prepared for that next hearing, we should, and want to continue again, since that would be a third time or maybe fourth, maybe even fifth. I think that the applicant should withdraw without prejudice. Or, or else if we open the public hearing instead of continuing, we could just, we could just vote on it.
All right, does that require anything more than a statement of fact at this moment?
No, I think Lauren can advise us when we get close to the meeting.
All right, great. So everybody be prepared for that. All right.
Do you agree to that, Amy? I agree with Clark's assessment wholeheartedly.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with that as well. And just one more of those things I have to learn. I have a wise one to, to help. Okay, so the informal discussion, let me just say something about the informal discussion on the scenic roads bylaw. A citizen emailed me, I forwarded it to Lauren. There was a request with a, an exhibit that indicated that there was, what the citizen felt was a non-compliance with the scenic roads bylaw and this individual would like to come before us and talk about the ways in which that law is, or that bylaw is implemented and issues that seem to be arising in her neighborhood. So we will see that the next time we meet, I believe. All right, let's move on. So we will now have a discussion reviewing of public hearing process with special counsel, please.
Good evening, thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, board members. In preparation for the, the hearing that we're doing later this afternoon, former Chair Mr. Brewer and Ms. Lynn asked me just to give you a little bit of a primer of an overview of how to conduct a public hearing, particularly with respect to a, a complicated land use issue like the one that is before us. And, and just as sort of a reminder, we, in our last meeting, we talked about the legal standards, the applicable legal standards and timeframes, and you have a memo on that. And then really wanted to sort of talk about this time. You know, this is obviously an applicant coming before you for discretionary land use approval. And you're going to be focusing on the application, which is filed under the Harbor Village Business Overlay District, which set forth specific standards and written findings that you ultimately have to make with respect to this application. And I know that in your packets, there is commentary and analysis from staff that goes through the, those specific points and, and lays out where you're going to need to make a decision and where you may need more information. So I, I want you to keep that in mind as we go through the public hearing. As you know, you know, a chair opens a public hearing consistent with the published time for the hearing. The applicant then projects, presents the project and then in an orderly fashion and, you know, particularly in the context of Zoom meetings and, and video conferences, orderly means, you know, waiting as much as possible for the chair to recognize you and, and finding a way to be recognized. The, the planning board members can ask questions and make comments. That typically happens first. Attendees provide comments. And then the applicant can be given the opportunity to respond to those comments and answer additional questions from the planning board members. There may be questions that can't be answered and, and they can be scheduled to be responded to at the, the next meeting. You know, for complex projects like this, public hearing is typically divided into multiple sessions. You're not going to take on all of the substantive issues in one meeting. And I know that Lauren has laid out a, a hearing schedule for you so that you and the applicant are on notice as to what subjects will be covered in each meeting. That's helpful for you so that you, you know, can prepare on those particular issues and also go back and look at those sections of the bylaw. You can ask questions of staff or counsel. We're all part of your resources to assist you in this process. And then you then have the hearing and then it also assists the applicant because they will have the right people available for you to answer the, the correct, the questions that you may have on those particular issues. As we've, we've talked about, a special permit requires a vote of four members of a five-member board and then needs to have a detailed record, the, the written decision, a detailed record of, of the decision and all of the standards that apply. In this case, 90 days from the date the public hearing is closed, the written decision has to be issued. You are also doing a site plan review at the same time. It is a joint application. The special permit deadlines apply, but you also have to look at the site plan review standards as well and consider them. And either two separate documents will be, be prepared or we'll prepare one document that, that appines and makes decisions on both applications. And we can talk about that as we get closer to that process. Again, staff, peer reviewer and counsel are available for you all to ask questions. A couple of other points I just wanted to make, which is, you know, the planning board should act and must act as a body, not as individuals. So that means in, in the context of this hearing and all hearings and in the context of the open meeting law, all your discussion and deliberation about this project needs to occur in public meetings here at published planning board meetings. While you may have questions for staff, individuals may have questions for staff. You need to be careful not to send out an email, you know, that includes every member of the planning board asking questions of staff. They should probably go, questions should probably go through the chair. So the chair is aware of, of what the issues are and then they should go to Lauren or Eve. And then answers back can be provided at the next meeting so that everybody has all the same information. Or if there's a preparatory memo done before the next meeting, then that memo can be done and provided to all of the board members at the same time prior to the meeting. But there shouldn't be back and forth amongst and between the board members about particular issues. That should be left for the public hearing. Let's see, I think that's really, really it, that's sort of the key pieces. You will have, you know, you make sure to allow the public to comment. And you may limit their time. If the hearing is going long, you should think about in advance sort of a timeframe you want to allow public comments to occur in. And then, again, you figure out whether you want the applicant to respond then and there at that meeting, at another meeting, sometimes it may be a combination of both. Madam Chair, do you have any questions or do your board members have any questions? You're on mute.
What am I able to do with regard to communications with you? So for example, if it comes to pass that there's a series of conversations that take place with the public at the public hearing and there needs to be responses that will be provided by the, for example, the engineers on the project, how will that information, they will have it at that meeting, but how will it get conveyed back to us as ANSTERS? Will it only be in public presence or will they actually write documents?
They, so do you mean your peer reviewer? They, so, do you mean your peer review engineer, or do you mean the project engineers on behalf of the applicant?
I would say by the applicant's engineer, because I think that the, the peer review seems to me to stand as a process by itself, and then the, the project engineer is, is actually really in the driver's seat.
So, it, it depends on the question, sometimes there will be a, a written, written responses prepared back to the planning staff, and then that can be circulated to the board in advance of the meeting, so they have an opportunity to review it before the meeting, and then they can discuss it and ask questions about the responses at the meeting.
All right, all right, Paul Grady?
You're asking?
Yeah. Go ahead.
You're asking us to act as a board, just for clarification, but I'm notified a question for Clark, and I notify the board of that question as a courtesy. I'm not supposed to do that, I'm supposed to send it to the chairman, and I have a question for Clark, or Eric, or Paul Cleary. You're asking us to act, you know, act as a board, so I'm a little confused by your explanation, to be quite honest with you.
Yeah, so, under the open meeting law requirements, any communication between board members that, that goes into deliberation, and asking questions can be a form of deliberation, has to be reserved for the meetings. So, you are not able to send emails that, and you shouldn't send emails that, that ask questions or discuss the project that is being considered in front of you. You should save those questions and comments for the meeting, so you may ask Clark that question in the meeting. If it's, if it's a question that needs staff input, or council input, or peer review input, then I think you would send it to the chair, who would then send it to, you know, the appropriate staff person, or you could send it to Lauren, I'm not sure, whichever way is preferable, but it, it shouldn't, you shouldn't be having a question back and forth session with Clark.
Yeah, that, that's what I was looking for in your clarification, I appreciate it, because I thought it was something even, it was offline, not pertaining to the subject at hand, so I appreciate the explanation.
I have a question, which is, you refer to or infer that we can speak with the peer review. Is that correct? Or is it that it has to go through a funnel like you're describing, and we should be best to send it either through me or directly to Lauren or Eve?
Yes, so it should go through a funnel process, so that then, when the, you know, you may want to collect the questions for the peer reviewer, and then they go to the peer reviewer, and then the peer reviewer's responses come back and go out in writing, and then can be discussed at the pub, the next public hearing.
Tom?
I just, I just want to be clear, because today, we received a memo from Eve, which I would normally have a number of comments about, so if I want to direct comments to Eve about it, send it to Amy, I'm not permitted to just CC the board, so they know what I'm asking?
Correct. You should not CC the board.
All right.
And in fact, those questions and comments may very well be best done in the meeting, not by email, in a public discussion.
Lauren?
Well, well.
Sorry, sorry, Tom.
I would just say sometimes maybe you don't want to do that, but to the extent you're going to question some of the conclusions that are being made of your own experts, but I understand the open meeting law thoroughly, and if that's what we do, that's what we do.
All right, Lauren?
Thank you, I would just like to add that if there's members who would like to communicate with planning staff, you're welcome to send anything to myself and, and copy the chair on it as well, that's something that we can do, or I can send it to the chair as well. And I would also just ask if the chair would allow, before we get into the next hearing after we conclude this discussion, if I could provide a quick introduction, just to really explain who our team is and what the roles are, to sort of clarify this as we move forward.
Yes, that's, that will be just fine. And so it will be in that conversation, Lauren, where you will explain how we interact with Eve, which it sounds like we go through a funnel. In all instances, a funnel is created and it goes to you, or if it comes to me, it goes to you, that is what I understand. Let me say one other thing, everybody knows that you can raise your hand, if you're a member of the meeting, on your right-hand side, you just click the participants and up will come a screen, it'll be, I monitor that pretty well, and I think it would make it easier for you to know that I know you're there if you have your hand raised. If, if, if there's no traffic, and, and only one person wants to speak, then it's fine to signal, you know, just like this, but if we have many people trying to speak, I'm going to have to create an ordered system to be fair to everyone, so please, start getting used to using a raise the hand. All right, so Lauren, would you like to explain to us how this next stage in the process is going to unfold? Thank you.
Thank you, so just an introduction, and before I even get into introducing our team, just for the general public purposes, we do have a question and answer function that we will be using. Jen will be, Jen Oram will be helping facilitate those questions at the end, so any questions that you would like to ask, we would ask that you state your name and address and ask your question, and we will get to those as appropriate. With that said, I'd just like to introduce, as I mentioned, our team before we hear from the applicant, I'll speak a bit briefly about each team member, their role in the process, and then I'll hear a bit more from each of them later in the meeting, at which point they can further introduce themselves and their qualifications prior to their presentation of information. After we do this introduction quickly of our team, I would just like to just revisit the proposed tentative schedule and take a vote from the members, while the schedule is subject to change as the hearing progresses, we, it would be helpful to have something to plan on for all of our participant purposes, whether it's lining up, you know, if we have a traffic engineer that needs to be there a certain night and not another, we just want to make sure that we have some sort of predictability to the schedule as we move into our next meetings. So, if there's any members that have a conflict, we can discuss it at that time. So with that, I will introduce our team, I'll start with myself, for those who don't know me, I'm the Planning Director here for the town of Cohasset. I've been with the town for just over a year now, prior to that, I had municipal planning experience and nonprofit planning experience, most recently in the town of Milton, Massachusetts. I do have a master's degree in city community, city, community and regional planning from Boston University, I have other credentials areas in public policy and sustainability, and just to let you know that my role in this process is to provide technical assistance to the board, to be a central point of contact for all parties, whether that be the applicant, the consultants, the board members, I will be a central repository of information, and I'm also the main contact for receiving written public from the comment, which I have been receiving, I have been distributing to the board and I continue to receive and comment. Any member of the public wishing to contact me, I can be reached via email at L. Lind, that's L.L.I.N.D@CohassetMA.org, so please, if you have anything you would like to submit to the board in writing, you can send it to me via email and I will make sure it gets to them. Next, we have Jennifer Oram, my, my office mate, and the Assistant Director of the Planning, Purisms and Inspections Department. Jen has been with the town of Cohasset for almost 15 years at this point, with support of much zoning experience, we work closely together, she is a keystone at Town Hall, she assists in day-to-day support of both planning and zoning functions, among other permitting and interdepartmental duties, and she will be directing our Q and A session post-hearing, and will be assisting with various meeting logistics. Next, I'll just highlight Eve Tapper, who is on the call with us. Eve, we have brought in as a temporary planning consultant, Eve has a wealth of municipal planning experience, most recently she has founded her own planning consulting firm. Eve, actually, many of you will recognize her, she worked as interim planning director here in Cohasset, between the time of the departure of my predecessor and my arrival. Eve brings an individual planning perspective and will advise the board on best practices, and will be assisting the planning board in navigating this process, leading discussions, and helping the board navigate different planning principles. Based on her expertise and familiarity with the Cohasset zoning bylaws, we felt that Eve would be a great fit for our team, that adds necessary staff capacity during what is a very busy time for us. You'll hear from Eve later in the evening, and she can elaborate more on herself. Next in our team is, as you've heard from our attorney, Karis North. Karis North is the designated planning board special counsel, she is involved in all planning board business, providing legal guidance and works closely with us. Next, I'll touch on our peer review team, the firm that we have, that we will be working with on this is Weston and Sampson, it is a well-respected firm in the industry with over 500 employees and numerous locations throughout New England and the East Coast. They offer interdisciplinary design, engineering, planning and environmental services. Our primary contact for this project will be Darian Kjerkian, who is with us on this call, he's the Senior Project Manager and Environmental Engineer. We also will be working primarily with James Rorden, who's an environmental planner and scientist. With that, those are our two main points of contact at this point, but we will also be working with and hearing from additional members of their team with expertise in additional disciplines as we get further into the process and into the details of the different disciplines of this, of this project. So, before we move on, I also just wanted to address some inquiries raised by some of the members of the board leading up to this meeting. There were some questions on how we chose a peer reviewer for the project, this did go through, there was a request for qualifications process issued by our procurement department, there was a formal process, there were several inquiries received, a series of interviews, and then the team chose to enter into contract negotiations with two firms, one, one sort of smaller-based firm and a larger firm, being that Weston and Sampson is the larger firm with, you know, additional staff capacity and expertise that would be in-house, it was chosen that we would use Weston and Sampson for this project, based on the scale of the project. The next question that I'd like to address, member Callahan raised whether the, whether Weston and Sampson had been vetted for conflict, the answer is yes, they were, this was conducted by the procurement team during the RFQ process, and in the interest of full transparency, I just want to inform you that Weston and Sampson did disclose a relationship with the applicant, a different side of their firm and different members. This disclosure was reviewed by our, by our special counsel and by our procurement team, and it was determined that there was no conflict, so since the question was posed, I wanted to address it publicly for all of the members and the public to be on the same page. Attorney North can speak to the no-conflict determination, and if there are any planning board members that have specific questions on how the RFQ process was conducted, I would be happy to set up a conference with our procurement director for you to, to ask those questions specifically. So, with that, I will ask, I'll pause a moment before we get into schedule to see if anybody has any questions. Seeing none.
Can we ask a question, or Lauren, if possible, is, could we compile a, a document of pictures of people who we will be working with, so that when the time comes and we switch from the condition we're in to a face-to-face condition, we will have a way to recognize people right off the bat, that, I think that would be helpful. It's not something that has to be done immediately, but I think sometimes putting a face to a name is, is helpful in, in understanding.
I would be happy to do that.
Amy, that's called creeping on Instagram or Facebook.
Clark Brewer?
It was a joke, it was a joke, guys.
Yeah, something that I think would help everybody to be organized with this, is to get a list, a running list of all the documents that we've received related to the special permit, so the first, the initial filing would be listed, each document, and then the, 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 the staff report and the matrix, and, and Eve Japper and the, and the consultant, all of their input, if we could have a date that we've received it, and then a description and who it came from, I think it's going to, you know, as, as well as, you know, members of the public that have sometimes surprising and marvelous insight, I think that's going to be important for all of us, so that we know we all have it, we can see it, we can look at it, when, whenever we're doing research outside of hearing time. So just in anticipation of every meeting, having like, you know, the, the bibliography.
I think that's a great recommendation, do we have a way, Lauren, to provide an open access library of materials, so that the public who wishes to go in and look can do that?
Yes, we certainly do, we have all of the application material that was submitted for the application currently on the website, we will continue to update that, and I also would be happy to continue to create a sort of central repository of information, as Clark has suggested, of all of the documents, and those can be made publicly available as well. So with that.
Just a point of clarification, I thought Clark wanted to have a record from the beginning of the project, so does that what you just described include that?
Yes.
Okay. Right, okay.
Yeah, and if I may, Madam Chair, those documents will also be necessary when the time comes to actually craft a decision, so that will be work done in advance, that would be very helpful.
So if there are no further questions on this, I would just like to request that the board take a vote on the schedule, I will share my screen so that you can see our current proposal, bear with me one moment. Okay. This is our current proposed tentative schedule, again, I would just like to be very clear that this is subject to change based on how our hearing process unfolds, and how much follow-up and questions that are needed, but at this time, are there any members that recognize a meeting, this is something to remain cognizant, if there's meetings that you may not be able to attend, you know, in terms of voting requirements, it's important that we keep track, that members cannot miss more than one meeting.
This looks good.
On my calendar.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the schedule?
Second it.
Sorry.
Um.
Aye.
Bye, just a minute, I'm trying to bring up everybody again. So, Eric, would you like to begin?
Aye.
Okay, Clark Brewer?
Aye.
Tom Callanan?
Aye.
Paul Grady?
Aye.
Amy Glassmire, aye.
Thank you. And that's all I have for you, I'll turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
Ask Eve one question, which is, would you like to introduce yourself for those that don't know you, since she will be at different points in time, our point of contact when Lauren is overwhelmed with a lot of work?
Sure, I'm happy to be back, I've, I met many of you, not all of you, a year ago when I was working in Cohasset, as, as Lauren noted, in interim in between Peter Matzek, who left, and before Lauren was hired, I'm, I'm very pleased to have been part of the team that, that hired Lauren, because she's just fabulous, so you guys are very lucky. And I'm glad to be back, just a little bit of a background, I have a master's in planning from the University of Virginia, and I spent the first six years out of college working for a congressman in DC, so I have some, my background started with politics, and then kind of moved into more specifics with regard to planning, and, and I just wanted to say at the outset, that my role is as an additional staff person to help the board come to a decision. It, it is not my intention to try to sway the board one way or the other, I just point out some issues that, the last memo, the first memo that you've gotten are just some things that I noticed at the very beginning, I haven't been on the board for very long. My goal is really to allow there to be a fair and, and process, and whether the board decides to approve this project or not approve it is not my decision, and if you don't agree with some of the ideas that I've brought up and questions to ask, that's fine too, I just want to put it out there that I can be a resource from a technical perspective, but also that I'm working for the town, and my goal really is to see that a decision gets made, one way or the other, and that the, if, if the project is approved, it's approved to the satisfaction and the goals of the town and, and as well as the property owner. So, that's kind of my role, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, and, and let's just move on.
All right, thank you very much. So, Lauren, would you mind putting the schedule back up? And let me begin by saying, for those of you that are new to a planning board hearing, the next stage is to open a public the next stage is to open a public hearing, and when we open a public hearing, we ask the clerk to read the statement that opens the public hearing. And that's number one. Number two, I want people to recognize that we are now about 45 minutes beyond where we expected to be at this moment, and we are expecting today to have an introduction to the project, a discussion of the site plan, layout and public realm, and traffic and circulation. I would like the consultants and the presenters to consider the fact that it is now 45 minutes late, and, and I'm asking simply to, for those who are here in the audience, and also those that might have family responsibilities, because we sort of have a time that we run these meetings, and we try not to go too far over that, which is about 9:30, is, do they feel comfortable being able to cover that material in the time that we have between now and 9:30? So let me open up the public hearing, and I will ask Paul Grady to read and open the public hearing. And then the question that I asked about whether or not we will have enough time, I would like to get an answer from the presenters. So Paul?
I'd love to read it, but I don't have it in front of me. Could we post it so I could read it? I left all my paperwork.
Amy, we, we read the public hearing on the 17th of June. Public hearing notice has been read.
So then that means we just begin?
That's right.
All right, thank you for that, Clark. Eric?
Oh, I, I would say on the schedule, there's, there's about three hearings, right? Public hearings, is that right, Lauren? Looks like there's after this one, right? We're already at 7:45, eight o'clock? July 15th, August 5th, September 9th. Include public hearings September 23rd. I, I, I understand that it's a, it's, it's a big responsibility of the planning board to, 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 to come to do these, these meetings, but we do, you know, volunteer to, and we, we're elected positions. I, I just think that my concern is, 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 before, I mean, after nine o'clock, everything starts going south, right? So are we gonna be rambling on for hours and hours? Are there other things on those agendas for those dates? And if they are, I would, I would propose that, you know, why don't we just allow that the, that these meetings be, be totally allocated towards this, this very important, you know, special permit, rather than, you know, wasting an hour and a half on, you know, administrative and other, you know, hearings? And if we need to throw another meeting in there, these Zoom meetings are very, very easy to do, you can do it on your cell phone. Why, why would we, you know, waste an hour and a half of time and then push everybody to nine or 10 o'clock? Everyone's gonna get grumpy, people aren't gonna be paying attention, and, and it's a disservice to everyone. You know, why not just get out of the gates, open up a meeting, and on these dates, and go right at it? And that way, we could crank it out and get the, get this done for, and that's gonna be in the best interest of the citizens and the developer, and, and everybody, you know? I, I just feel like after, I'm thinking for myself, after nine o'clock, after 9:30, I'm starting to, you know, I'm starting to lose steam a little bit. So I can imagine that a lot of people are starting to feel that way as well. With Zoom, the one thing, even though I hate Zoom, the one good thing about Zoom is, you could be in, you know, you know, in Barcelona, you know, Spain, and so, you know, call it. So I, I just would really like to see that we get this thing moving along so that people don't get bogged down with nonsense, and lose steam, and, and we really start to unravel a little bit. But I'll defer to you, Lauren.
So I'll just make a comment. I think we raised this issue in earlier discussions as we were leading up to this public hearing, and I think Lauren worked very hard to lay out what she thought was reasonable, and we have to take into account the fact that we have to do the, the town's business in addition to conducting this public hearing. That's all I would have to say. What do you, Lauren, would you like to comment?
Sure. So the first initial proposal did have this stretching out further towards November. The board had asked for it to be condensed, they did not want this to, you know, to have so many hearings over a certain period of time. So this was an attempt at condensing. With that in mind, I've tried to be very transparent that this is subject to change because there are other items that will come up in our, I already know of a couple applications that we will need to address in the coming months. So with that, I would, you know, turn back to the board and, and seek your, how you would prefer to move forward on this. Eric?
I, I would think condensing is the way to go here, guys. I mean, this is a big project, and to drag it out over months seems like not the way to do it, because people are gonna forget what they talked about last meeting. Condensing, this looks like a great schedule for this particular matter. I, I, I think it's awesome, I think that's great, you know? But I personally wouldn't mind, you know, if, if throwing in a July 22nd meeting or an August 14th meeting, or something like that, for other matters that don't relate to this special permit, so that we can keep this on schedule, not drag it out, so that, you know, it goes on into November or even further, and stay focused on the matter at hand, and, but also not be bogged down with, with stuff that's gonna take an hour and a half, or whatever it may take, and then we get to the meat of things and we're already at eight o'clock. I mean, it would be, in my opinion, my sole vote would be to, let's throw a meeting in there if we have to for a large overview, or whatever it may be, you know, to, to, to take care of that stuff, so that we can focus on what is probably the most important special permit to come in front of the, the town of Cohasset within the last, you know, who knows how many years, right?
Uh, Lauren? Thank you. So I will suggest, in the interest of time, that we, since the board already voted and felt comfortable with this schedule, that we would move forward here, and I will pull the board offline later this week on when we can fit in another meeting, perhaps in late July or some point in August to address other business if the board feels comfortable with that.
Thanks, Lauren.
Yeah, that sounds to me like a good idea, and, and consolidating those. It's also possible to just basically stick to the, the schedule. We've had a lot of business that we had to do, and we won't be having to do that again. All right, so with no further ado, Lauren, are you going to be doing the introductions?
No, I will not. I will turn it over to the applicant to begin their presentation, and I will ask, because there's a lot of people who need to be presenting, if you are not currently speaking or need to present, if you could mute yourself and, and turn your video off, that way we can help focus the conversation and with technical speed issues.
You need to ask the chair screen.
George, do you have the ability to share your screen?
I'm gonna, Ted is sitting six feet away from me here. If you can allow him to share the screen, he'll run through the slide deck while I talk. Should be able to pull up.
Ted should be able to share his screen now.
I presume that we're all set to start?
You're... Sorry.
Thank you. Obviously, congratulations, Madam Chair, and to Mr. Callahan on your new positions. Good evening, board members and all participants, and the public that are watching tonight. Obviously, very excited to be presenting on behalf of the Cohasset Hospitality Partners this project. It's been a long time coming. We have, by way of introduction, my name is George McGoldrick, live at 107 Border Street. I have been a town resident for 28 years. My wife, Mary, and I raised our three children here. She and I have been very active on numerous boards and committees in the town over the last 28 years. Also with me tonight, socially distanced on the other side of the room, is Ted Lubitz. He is also a, he is a lifetime Cohasset resident, and in fact is a neighbor of mine here over in Border Street. The application that we put forth in front of you, I will go through how we got here, the process that we went through, talk about how all the different constituents of the harbor have contributed to really what this project is. Certainly, and absolutely, is not something that we sat in a room and conjured up ourselves. This was something that has been in the, in the works for quite some time. In fact, I'm sure that this project of tearing down the hotel has been on people's minds since the day it opened in the early 70s. There was a attempt about 20 years ago to do some work in the harbor, which did not go anywhere, but we're now here to talk about the process that we have been through and talk about the project that we are presenting to you. The existing uses that we have on the prop today, Ted? You have one job to do. Obviously, the old Kimball's Hotel, which opened in the early 70s via a special permit, is in the forefront there, and then across the street is 87 Elm Street. The hotel has got 55 rooms, has restaurant space and special event space, and across the street at 87 Elm, there's five apartments and some commercial space. The process that led us until tonight, again, I think started 50 years ago when the hotel opened, but more recently started almost exactly two years ago when an out-of-town developer named Harbinger put both the Cohasset Harbor Inn and Atlantic and Old Salt House under agreement with the previous owner. And then he approached the town and started discussions about renovating the properties, tearing them down, and upgrading the harbor. The town then started the process of looking at a zoning change for the properties to include a residential use, and in fact, had put it on for the fall town meeting in 2018. In the late summer of 2018, Harbinger approached the town and told them that he withdrew from his agreement with the previous owner. The town, in, in his timeframe also, then decided to move the warrant article to the following year. It was in October of that year that Ted, myself, and Alex and Andrew Markuni started talking to the previous owner, who we understood was in serious financial trouble. Over the course of the next four months, we ended up reaching an agreement where we took over three properties, the two I just mentioned, as well as the Red Lion Inn in town, and took over full responsibility of running them and ownership of the properties as of January 2019. We had some initial discussions with the town about what the town wanted to do down at the harbor, and at the time, the town also then started and hired Harriman consultants who were working on the harbor plan to help the planning board draft the zoning article for the spring town meeting in 2019. April 2019, the town overwhelmingly voted, over 350 people showed up at town meeting and voted in favor of putting an overlay just on the area where the 124, or the lower area of the cove of the harbor is, and elected not to rezone or change anything up at Atlantic Old Salt House or at the No Wharf Buildings. We started then holding community forums to talk about what the town, community, butters, neighbors wanted to see out there. In November, the planning board approved the harbor design plans and guidelines. The master plan was also approved that year. So during 2018 and 19, the master plan, the harbor plan, and the zoning overlay basically laid out the parameters for what could be developed on the site that we're talking about tonight. So once we had all that information, can you go to the next slide, please? Once we had all that information, again, the master plan, what the zoning bylaw allows, what the plan, the harbor plan wanted, we looked and saw what the public benefits needed to be, we looked at feasibility of a project, public-private partnership of doing something together, we took all the public comments in, we had consulted input from not only our own consultants, but also the town consultants, and then over and above, we looked at balancing the uses of the land here in order to come up with a project that we hope the town agrees with us, that it betters the harbor access for everyone, that it improves the visibility of the harbor from numerous locations, and it also helps the viability of an access to the waterfront. These quotes here that we're showing now are directly from the harbor plan and the master plan, and you'll see that we've checked the boxes. We're proposing supports a variety of uses, we're trying to enhance the land and water in the edge and support access to the harbor, trying to balance the needs of the neighborhood and the town. In the master plan, 2019, it talked about transforming this important part of the harbor front and the waterfront, and opening up views from Elm Street, which turns into Margit Street. So it's always been called the Elm Street View Corridor, but it's Elm and Margit Street View Corridors, to improve pedestrian connectivity and bicycle access and safety, which is a very important thing we'll get into later on, create more recreational resources, and then finally to prioritize protection of open spaces. So again, with all these, from the, all these things that we've done with our harbor plan and the master plan of zoning, we then created a project that again checks the boxes for the zoning in terms of creating a new captain's walk, access along the waterfront, so that no longer people have to go around the building, which is a very unsafe situation as it stands today, and will be able to continue from Margit Street along the waterfront out to Border Street. We have the no-bill setback, which we've actually, under the zoning, was required to be 25 feet, and we have significantly larger. We've created the view corridor that was required, we're maintaining the height requirement under zoning, we believe we adhere to all the design guidelines. We contain a mix of uses, our density is actually less than what a zoning is, our lot coverage is less than what's required. We have a parking requirement we meet, the ground floor public use we meet and exceed significantly. There was one issue on a parking requirements for commercial that we don't meet, and that's one of the few things that we're asking for the town to look at, and we have backup data as to why we think that it. And finally, we're conforming with the harbor plan, master plan, and most importantly, we have strict conformance with the Chapter 91 requirements, and we'll get into that later on, and the importance of that, and actually the benefit that that does and gives to the town. Some of the comments we received during our public meetings were to maintain increased public parking at the Veterans Park, which we will be doing, reduce the number of current access points from the property, that now there are four. We're proposing to eliminate three of those four curb cuts, increase public access to the harbor. Right now, there is no public access to the harbor, and we are proposing to create a 20,000-square-foot public park along the waterfront, provide viable mix of commercial and active ground floor uses, which we will do. We're adhering to the height limitation that's required under the zoning, we're providing recreational uses and spaces for bikes, kayaks, and paddleboards. In terms of water connectivity, the town pier, you'll see on the plan how the walkway connects and easily connects to the current town pier that's along Margit Street. One of the comments was whether or not the property could be 100% open space, and obviously, in order to create the public park, we need to have some development there. We have looked and spent a lot of time on the residency and flood preparedness. We are providing significant outdoor space for the public, as I mentioned, a 20,000-square-foot public park, which you'll see in a minute. We also have providing commercial uses with retail, where we have over 3,500 square feet of retail space available, which could hold five to seven different types of businesses down there, plus an additional seasonal kiosk, which we're proposing outside that can... hold five to seven different types of businesses down there, plus an additional seasonal kiosk, which we're proposing outside that can help maintain and some of the businesses in the village to have an offsite presence down at the harbor as well. Our development team obviously is Chiel Street Realty is the LLC we set up for this and that consists of the four principals, myself, Ted Lubitz, Alex and Andrew Marconi. We've hired CBT as our architect. CBT is an internationally known architectural firm based in Boston. I have used them in the past numerous times, including over at the Black Rock Country Club and the homes and residences of Black Rock. We have an award winning design landscape firm. Local civil engineering firm that everyone is familiar with in Cabanero. We have a legal team based in Hingham and then we have a Boston based Vanessa and Associates as our traffic engineers. Existing uses we're all familiar with, unfortunately. The building that's now up against the water, no public access, blocking views. The middle slide shows the current view down Elm Street and Margit Street. And there's a wall that now is created between the community and the waterfront. And then the buildings across eighty seven Elm, which traditionally had been unoccupied last number of years and dilapidated apartments in the rear. Under the zoning that was approved. We had to take a look at what the plans would allow us to do and the zoning would allow us to do because we had committed to providing the view corridor along Elm and Margit Street. And we had committed to a larger than what's required on chapter ninety one walkway and public space along the waterfront. The slide on the left was prepared by Harriman for the town for a public meeting back in March to show what could be done on the site. Under the current, under the zoning that was passed by the town. The slide on the right, which you'll see quite often over the next few months, is our proposed site plan. Where we have tried to take all of the guidance that was provided by the harbor plan, the master plan and the zoning overlay and tried to create a commercial and residential space that obviously we can be proud of as I'll be driving by this for the rest of my life. But also create a lot of public space and most importantly, public access to our great waterfront. On the top of the screen is a view, bird's eye view come taken from Border Street, looking over Veterans Park to the site. The parking that you see there is an existing parking lot that's currently owned by the town and by ourselves. There is a very irregular lot line that goes through that parking lot. Because of the necessity of having parking for the Legion and for the Veterans Memorial, we are not touching that parking. In fact, we're keeping the same number of spaces. Adding a handicap space as well. The middle frame shows a view coming up Margit Street from the old Roy estate. And you can see the beginning of the captain's walk. That first floor space you see there is actually commercial retail space for the public. And on the bottom of the screen, you'll see the new view that we're proposing along Elm and Margit Street. Where you now have a view out to the water as you're coming down Elm Street from town, which connects our downtown to the harbor. One of the main issues that the harbor plan had called out for. There are three new view corridors that are being created. The Elm Street, Margit Street View Corridor. A pedestrian view corridor through the property. And then Summer Street, looking across over to the harbor. I'd actually add better view corridor from Border Street, which we travel every day. On this plan, you'll see the harbor walk and also the green is the publicly accessible park that we'll be creating. The public benefits of our proposed project or to create a park where there was none, to create a harbor walk. We have a no built setback of a minimum of twenty five feet and again, in a number of areas exceed that by almost double. Within the chapter ninety one area and the chapter ninety one area, of course, is the is a line that was predetermined and requires to have public access. We have eleven thousand square foot park within chapter ninety one. And then an additional eighty eight hundred square feet outside of what's required under chapter ninety one. Obviously, the new view corridor, we're maintaining the parking. We're looking to add some parking along Margit Street, which would support the commercial retail use that's down on that end. And obviously, we're talking about adding bike spaces, kayak racks, et cetera, to the proposed project where there is none now. Under the plan that we're presenting to you tonight. The proposed real estate tax revenue could be in excess of four hundred thousand dollars, which compares to the existing two properties having a total of sixty two thousand dollars. Obviously, when we do building permits, there are building permit fees. And under this plan, we have underground indoor concealed parking on the project. On the view corridor, we just wanted to show what the annual town meeting was presented that was presented by, I believe, the planning board. The Cohasset Harbor Plan that was approved shows is the middle slide. And then our proposed, so we believe that we adhere to exactly what town meeting voted on and to what the horror plan had requested. The building program that we're proposing has three components. For now, we're calling them the north, south and west buildings. The north building runs along Margit Street. Contains thirteen units. The six first floor units and seven townhouse units above it. There's about twenty four hundred square feet of retail space at the waterfront side. And the underground parking is beneath the building. The south building contains six units. That's along Elm Street. Three units on the first floor and three townhouse units on the second floor. And again, the underground parking goes beneath both the north and south buildings. Across the street on the west building, we have a total of ten units. Twelve hundred square feet of commercial space. And all the parking is screened from the street. So I'm now going to turn it over to our legal counsel, Adam Brodsky, to talk about some of the issues. Zoning, Adam.
Thank you, George. Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Adam Brodsky. I'm an environmental and land use lawyer with Dron, Tatcho and Morgan. Thank you, George. It's been an absolute pleasure to work with George and Ted and this design team. I have a relatively easy job because of this project has been so well designed and I'll be brief. Property at one twenty four Elm Street, where the Cohasset Inn is located within the waterfront business and harbor village business overlay district, the HBVOD district, I hope I say that correctly each time. The property across the street at eighty seven Elm Street is located within the downtown business zoning district and the HBVOD. Both properties are located within the FEMA flood zone and therefore within the town's floodplain and watershed protection district. We're proposing raising the existing buildings and constructing a new mixed use development. As George noted, there'll be underground and surface parking at one twenty four Elm Street and surface parking at eighty seven Elm Street. We require an HBVOD special permit in site plan review from the planning board. And because the project is located within the town's floodplain protection district, we also require a special permit from the zoning board for appeals. That application has been filed and we will be meeting with the zoning board shortly. Once we're further along in the process and the design finalized, we will be filing a noticement tent and a request for a stormwater permit from the conservation commission. And importantly, the project has been designed such that the proposed buildings are actually located outside of chapter ninety one jurisdiction. But as George noted, we will require a chapter ninety one license under the state Water Waterfront Act from DEP for those elements within chapter ninety one jurisdiction, including the captain's walk. And again, my job is so easy because the project has been designed to meet or exceed all the requirements except for several mining minor parking waivers, which we're seeking. The project meets site plan approval standards under section three hundred twelve point six. The project is designed in conformance with the HBVOD design guidelines. The project conforms with the key design and performance standards for an HBO, uh, BO, H, uh, Hingham, excuse me, the HBVOD special permit under section three hundred twenty two point six and twenty two point eight. And I won't go through those. George has noted those in his slide. The only addition that I would add is that we're required under the bylaw to provide a minimum of fifteen percent publicly accessible ground floor commercial use. And in fact, we're providing approximately thirty four percent of that particular use. We do require several waivers from parking standards. The first concerns the number of parking spaces. We in fact propose more total parking spaces than are required. We're required under zoning to have seventy nine total parking spaces. We're providing eighty one. But we wish to provide more than the minimum required parking for multifamily residential use. So we're proposing two parking spaces per dwelling unit rather than the one point five that's called for in the bylaw. For a total fifty eight parking spaces for that you use that exceeds the forty four parking spaces required by zoning. And we're doing this for, among other reasons, marketability. These are luxury for sale units. And we thought it appropriate to have two dedicated parking spaces for each dwelling unit. We're proposing twenty three parking spaces for our retail use, which is based upon a parking demand study by Vanessa and Associates. Vanessa has calculated that we would need thirteen parking spaces at peak demand for our retail use. We're in fact providing twenty three. The zoning requirement is thirty five, but again, we believe that twenty three is more than appropriate for which we're seeking a waiver. And we're also seeking waivers regarding the size and configuration of certain of the parking spaces and drive aisles. And I'm happy to talk about that at a later time. And lastly, the project will comply with the town's inclusionary zoning requirements for affordable housing. That will be a subject for discussion another night. But again, I do want to note that this is not a rental project. This is a luxury for sale project and we respectfully suggest that it may not be the best use of resources to be talking about affordable units on these properties. And we wish to explore alternatives for the benefit of the town. And again, I promised to be brief and hopefully that was brief. And at this point, I'd like to turn it over to CBT to give you a sense of the architect.
Thank you very much and please move on.
Great. Hi, this is Haril Pandya from CBT. Am I able to screen share? Let's see here. Oh, there we go. Great. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent.
Yes.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair and everyone else on the board. My name is Haril Pandya. I'm a principal at CBT in Boston and have been there for about sixteen years doing a fair amount of residential work as well as some master plan work. So Madam Chair, I'm really excited to see you at the, at this appointment chair because I think this is a wonderful topic for a really great town. Just to dive into it, I think, you know, these are a lot of the things that we really wanted to consider. And I think this is not just a localized, you know, project in many ways. I think the value here is also the fact that we have a connection to the village. And I think there's been a lot of the harbor planet, not only talks about the value and the importance of it, but the real need to make sure that the village and the harbor are connected. And right now, we're not only connect, you know, have a barrier from a physical perspective, but from a visual perspective. And I think George did a lot of the heavy lifting for me and and did a great job explaining a lot of the benefit of what the project hopes to achieve. But I think just on a macro level, you know, to kind of talk about the viability and the importance of connecting these things together and using these as bookends, if you will, to really improve the connectivity urbanistically. I know we're in a suburban context, but from a master plan or concept, you know, the idea here is to really try to create a fair amount of connectivity. So, you know, we look at it from a myriad of ways. We look at a lot of the external forces and the internal internal forces on the site that really impact how we go about and approach this, not only from a resiliency perspective, which is really critical and important along the harbor's edge, but also understanding, you know, the flooding and and what what those issues are around a town that's, you know, has all this wonderful waterfront and the watershed that's a part of it. So there are a lot of components that we wanted to address. Obviously, it's hard to solve every issue we're confronted with, but I think we try to address them as best as we possibly can in a, in a, in a variety of ways. And part of it is like George delineated is to really create that enhancement of the captain's walk, the harbors walk, because it really allows connection to the pavilion, the parks, the town dock, restaurants, et cetera, to really kind of tie together. Really sort of a missing component, if you will, along the harbor's edge, which I think this project really starts to address. So here's some views. You know, just kind of looking at existing views that are here today. Down Margit Street or down Elm Street and down Borders. So these are all the different, you know, wonderful access points and you can kind of zoom out a little bit at the harbor. You're everyone sort of familiar with with the building that's there. So I think these are really important things to talk about because it's really a short walk from the village to the harbor. I think having something to go to versus something to arrive to and just simply move around, I think is is really a component that we wanted to address. So here's a sort of an aerial, if you will, for the site plan we were just looking at. And again, looking at the different components that are not only there from an existing perspective like the end and how we're facing some physical barrier, visual barrier, but again, just to reiterate the ability to complete this edge along the water as part of our exercise and really try to improve that and then, you know, to reestablish, if you will, connection with the captain's walk around around the site. And these are the two sites here, both at one twenty four and eighty seven. And of course, one of the things that everyone is aware of and conscious of is really trying to open up that view corridor as best as we can. Recognizing some of the, you know, the internal forces of the harbor walk being interrupted here. And then sort of the views again for the Cohasset and the public access. I think we really have an opportunity here, probably more than ever to really make something wonderful appear at that part of the site. So just from a master plan perspective, you know, these icons really more represent, you know, a couple of components that are activating the pedestrian piece, really improving connectivity, like I said, all the way to the village end. It's immediately adjacent sidewalks and streets, a vibrant use of uses. And that's not only just residential, but some mixed use and retail, some external kiosks, et cetera, to kind of really give people and the public and the community a reason to go there. Extending that harbor walks. And then we talked about the vibrancy of the harbor and then the public access to the harbor. So these are all really important pieces that we wanted to make sure that we are incorporating into everything we're doing. And then obviously the views and the beauty that exists there today, something that we really want to try to enhance. So at least even the folks that are going to be ultimately living here on this, on this site are really going to benefit from looking out to the water as much as they're able to look at the, the parks and the, and the public improvements. So you can see here some of the icon. Sure, Janet is asking a question. I don't know. Should pause.
I think we're holding to the end, the questions.
Unless there's something that's a point of information to make it clearer, it would be better if we held off questions until the end, if that's all right.
Okay, I'm happy to keep continuing. So here you can see some of the icons that we were discussing previously here and sort of putting them on the site plan. So we can talk about the vibrancy of the mixed use. So we can talk about the vibrancy of the mixed uses. We're talking about the more vibrant harbor edge. We're talking about the access to the harbor. All these things are sort of, you know, being superimposed, you know, on our current site plan. And of course, not to mention, obviously, not only is the harbor important and critical, but I think we have some wonderful views even from 87 now that get to look at the James Brook and some of those use of nature, which I think are really quite nice as well. So we have some opportunities on both sites that are really quite wonderful. You know, just for point of mention, I think a lot of folks have seen this, but you know, there's a lot of interesting nuance and peculiarity, you know, with the site, not only to mention the irregular shape, but as George alluded to before, the lot line. But then you're really sort of trying to layer the multiple setbacks, you know, the jurisdictions and the different water dependent uses. And, you know, you're kind of really left with a really, for lack of a better word, funky shape of property to really kind of make sure we try to capitalize and use and try to really enhance. So I think that's really, you know, been one of the challenges, but something that we kind of really wanted to incorporate early. So you can kind of see here on this particular slide how the current building really kind of interferes and intersects with not only the views and whatnot, but some of the setback requirements that we're up against. So, you know, the goal here is to really improve the way the physical form and the land and the landform kind of intersects. So we kind of start removing these clashes, if you will. And the new proposed project here, you can see here, really tries to steer away from all the setbacks and meet all the setback requirements, the zoning requirements. And the one intersection of building in that space really is the facilities of public accommodation. So we are allowed to put some retail here that's not residential dependent that is available for public use. So that is the one component that does intersect there, but we do, that does comply with the guidelines. The image here at the bottom really is talking about, you know, the height in the zoning envelopes that we were discussing. You know, one thing here to know more than anything is it's just sort of the eternal continuity of roofline on the existing and that kind of keeps going. And the one, you know, opportunity we have here is that the proposal is we have peaks and valleys and some open space and whatnot. There's a more dynamic quality of the building skyline, if you will, rather than just a continuous block. So that's a positive piece to keep in mind is that there are, you know, little peek-a-boo moments where we're able to be on the sidewalk and road and look up and look through the building rather than just a solid block. And then here are some of the landscape design parameters, and I invite Mark Pofferswell to come in and sort of dialogue with me on some of these pieces to sort of really, you know, will kind of co-deliver some of these important pieces. But you can see here, we are challenged with a lot of the topography of the site. You know, there's a lot of low points over here. There's some high points. And we're trying to use the flood elevation as a marking point. And that flood elevation baseline that we're using is at nine. So everything really moves from the nine level. So the zoning compliance, the 35 feet, all of that is within compliance based on that component. Mark, is there anything you want to add to this slide before I move to the next?
Yeah, I think one of the important things about this slide is it also shows the 10-foot harbor walk zone and the 25-foot no build setback and how much further the proposed massing is from those requirements. This drawing also shows the Chapter 91 boundary. And you'll see those through the analysis as we go forward.
Great.
So this plan starts to simplify some of those grading issues a little bit more. If we think about the top of the harbor walk being at plus zero or elevation zero, you can see how there's a slight rise going up to Margin Street along the harbor walk and that the terraces are at plus four, plus five. So we're raising up the ground level of the buildings to be at a resilient height to prevent flooding of those units. But then even looking along Summer Street and Elm Street, for instance, the sidewalk in some places is back at plus one. So it has some challenging grading issues that we've been able to resolve through site design and architecture design.
Great.
So again, this is sort of reiterating what George was just talking about with the view corridors. The primary view corridors are from Elm Street extended through Margin down Summer Street. And then there are also ones that are more at the pedestrian scale through the center of the project. This becomes a main circulation spine between the units. And also the idea of being able to see through the existing parking is really an important viewport into and even a physical connection that people can travel to connect the street with the harbor.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point to remember. It's not only just simply providing the Elm Street and Margin Street view corridor component, which is there. I think, you know, again, it's about delineating the mass. It's about sort of breaking up some of the components to again, create more views and vistas that are available in a more, you know, in a wider aperture than there is available today.
So this next image gets to how the proposed development approaches the street. So the zones that are indicated as orange here are street front access. And this is a way of having the buildings in front, the street rather directly, with little pockets of landscape that are these respite moments that happen in various different ways around the project. And one of the ideas here is that this is the complete opposite of what the existing condition is. And that is that there's a surface parking lot in a building that's set way, way back on the site, creating not such a great sort of urban condition, if you will, or a street front condition. Here, the idea is that the buildings move up and participate in the street and are sort of windows and doors on the sidewalk.
Yeah, and I think that sort of is also part of engaging, you know, the residents to kind of create some activity along the edge because this is going to be a pretty active, you know, seasonal use. And I think it's important to remember that, you know, we want to encourage that sort of vibrancy around the entire part of the site. So I think, you know, the way the buildings engage with the sidewalk is important.
So this is the idea of the harbor walk. So one of the great opportunities that this project has is removing a really large impediment to realization of this idea that the harbor walk can connect the town dock with Lawrence Wharf and even beyond Lawrence Wharf. So that's the first goal of the sort of public space within the project. And it connects to existing pathways and circulation from Border Street and the Veterans Park and continues across along the back of the seawall to connect over to Margin Street and the town dock. And then the second piece of this, if you want to lay on to the next one, is a secondary series of larger spaces. These spaces are different in character. A lot of them are vegetated spaces. We also have some that are paved spaces, so we call the harbor terraces are related to the retail function. And allow different prospect, different seating kind of configurations and so forth. It also has a certain amount of flexibility within these spaces, which we'll talk about in just a moment.
Yeah, and I think it's important to note that the harbor plan, you know, does spend a fair amount of time talking about edges and how the edges are important. I think there's hard edges and there's soft edges and, you know, making sure that the resilient edge of the walk itself is also important. I think, you know, edges is such a great word because we have so many ways that edges are defined and opportunities that each edge actually creates. So that the permeability of certain edges, the solidity of certain edges, the water sheet creates that edge as well. And I think each one of these represents an opportunity, you know, to this project in a way that's very, really unique. And I think many people in the community will be able to participate in this, in the site because of it. So I think that's important. So the level of either privacy to public, whether it's permeable or solid, whether it's green or it's hardscape, I think all these options are being introduced into the, into the project.
So this gets at that same idea of how the buildings in front the street. So one of the really important ideas of making community is that the units actually have doors on the public way. So this diagram is showing how the units have their front doors on the street and the sidewalk and create a neighborhood as a result of that. This is really an important sort of community design idea that this project supports.
Agreed.
So the next slide shows that there's also an interior circulation that allows everyone who lives in these units to the indoor amenity areas within both the 87 and the 124 Elm components as well as the sort of common space, the exterior common space that's shared among the units.
It's important to, again, create sort of this wonderful mixing bowl, if you will, of creating these shared amenities that we, you know, we can, they all can use. And whether you live here or you're just passing through, you'll be able to see that activity and dynamism of the site being used in different ways at different times of the day and different times of the year.
So the next layer starts to talk about how the public actually engages in this. So as part of this plan, there's some retail square footage and function. This happens at different scales. The part of the retail at 87 Elm, for instance, is different than the retail that's proposed adjacent to the harbor walk. And there's also small kiosks that are sort of sprinkled through the harbor walk as well as a way of animating that space. And also, as George mentioned, the possibility of retail establishments that are downtown have sort of outposts here. Another way that we've seen these used in other projects is that these become sort of incubator spaces where business gets started perhaps in the summer and then ultimately expands to be a full-fledged restaurant downtown or something like that is another way in which a lot of municipalities use spaces like this. And then also connected to this are the ideas of these sort of layered terraces that have a slight grade change between them. So the dining terrace is slightly higher than the landing terrace. And those allow sort of different activities to take place there, different seating options to take place there. It allows more people to have a view because it's stacked something like an amphitheater in a way and that the, all of those then are connected by the harbor walk.
Yeah, that's important to note, I think, just as a, as a design firm, you know, we get asked quite often, especially now, about how some of these things are, you know, positive towards, you know, COVID and what we're learning from where we are today in these past few months. And to be able to have not only open air options that are gracious like this, I think it's also important to note that there's flexibility, as Mark's saying, that really kind of can delineate how seating goes. You can, right now, you know, who knows how long it may last, but ultimately at least provide the flexibility for, you know, different seating options. So there's at least an emotional or psychological sense of comfort and distance as a part of this as we kind of get back to whatever the new normal ultimately is. But I think we're seeing this a lot in our practice. We're getting asked a lot of this by towns, municipalities, clients, owners, et cetera. And I think it's an important thing to consider that this breadth and this air and this opportunity really exists as part of this sort of future forward, if you will.
So one of the things that George mentioned in his opening comments were the addition of some parking spaces along Margin Street. So what we propose here is actually an accessible space that's very close to the retail that's proposed in the project, a service space possibly and an additional parking space. So that the first two are sort of more, and even the third one are sort of more transient in terms of their use. But they just provide a closer access for the serviceability of the retail. This other blue dash line indicates where the accessible parking space is within the existing parking lot. And you can see that the retail is actually served by both of those. The harbor walk is also served by the latter one in the parking lot as well.
Yep.
Also noted on this are the bicycle spaces along Margin Street. So then, you know, sort of picking up on what Haril was just saying about social distancing and the ability to use space in different ways. This is really capitalizing on the existing Veterans Park and then proposing really just open lawn spaces that allow people to picnic, that allow there to be the possibility of doing a farmer's market or arts and crafts festival or music events, that sort of thing, within the sort of very slightly sloped lawn space that just allows a lot of, a lot of different uses within the area that's just lawn. And then what we're calling the sort of Margin Street event space or park space within the view corridor is just another green space of a different scale. So could imagine that you could have a really fairly large event that would actually occupy all four of these spaces, one of them being paved and three of them being landscape spaces that would really start to have a kind of waterfront festival that could even continue around the Lawrence Wharf as well. So I think that presents a pretty exciting opportunity for Cohasset.
Yeah, I think the opportunity that we forget sometimes is the view back towards the project from the water. And as people are looking at it that way, to have an edge that could be animated through, you know, variety of uses or you can see people or lights, et cetera, for some event in the future. I think that's, it's an important way to look at the project. I think it's, it's good to look at it, not only, you know, the connection of the village, which, you know, we want to maintain that aperture so you can see, you'll see in a minute, we have some views, but, you know, not only see the aperture, but see people. And I think that's going to be important going forward. You know, this retail edge to be able to see people, this park, if there's an event. And, you know, these, again, these are transient spaces. So I mean, the goal here is to really be able to try to see through that area. And not only that, but hopefully see activity, which I think is also another way to draw someone or draw people towards that area.
So one of the other things that this drawing proposes, if you could jump back for just a second.
Oh, sorry.
The red dash line is an idea we had about like kayak and subboard rentals and their ability to launch those from the town dock. This gives a place for storage and rental of that. That's something that happens in my seaside town up on the North Shore. That's been a really great part of the community to have. Even people who don't own these could go and rent a kayak and actually enjoy the water sheet of the harbor just as much as people who have their boats moored in the harbor. So this sort of allows a different kind of access and activation of the water sheet.
Yeah, and I think it's wonderful. I was just in Bristol Run Island over the weekend and they had something very similar along the water. It was really quite nice. All the kayaks, everything were stacked. You can tell it was really in use.
So really, this is our last slide. This speaks to the circulation, the vehicular circulation. So the red lines indicate like where the curb cuts are and how the public lot is still accessed in the same way it is today. There's also a branch that comes off of that into the underground garage on the 124 side. And similarly, on the 87 side, there's a little ramp that goes underneath the building and then parking is located underneath the building that also comes out to the brook. And the orange lines are indicating pedestrian circulation. The dash lines are showing the private routes within the condominium complex. And the solid lines are the public routes throughout.
So thanks, Mark. That's really helpful, just to kind of pick it up to keep an eye on time. I think, I think the idea here now is just to kind of give a quick sense of some before and after so we can just look at some imagery. I think a lot of the explaining that Mark and I were doing really to sort of kind of get into the why, the wherewithal, the sort of how we got there. And then, you know, architecturally, as we review it and talk about it going forward, of course, a lot of these are still in concept mode as far as the look and feel. But we wanted to create something that's fitting for that sort of shingle style look that is within the town of Cohasset and it feels like it really belongs. So here's the before, if you will, of the existing building, the end that's there today. And then the after, you just, you can tell there's a lot more wide open spaces. And again, the north building, the south building. Here, you only get to see one edge of 87. We're going to see some other views in a minute that we'll get to, get to that. But again, just to, we're kind of going off an aerial that exists today. So just trying to match it up as best we could with some software. Here's the, here's that view coming down Elm and looking down Margin. You can tell obviously a pretty good barrier that, you know, everyone's acknowledged and cognizant of. And then the ability to open it up and get a chance of seeing this again. This, this is that retail piece that hopefully we'll see some light, life. And it also sets back, so it's not a straight vertical street wall here at all. This actually keeps stepping back by eight or 10 feet. So the goal to be able to see beyond, this is the kiosk that Mark was referring to earlier, whether you see ships or activity, you know, to get some light, if you will, at the end of the tunnel when you're driving down Elm Street to be able to see this, I think it's going to be quite nice. Along with some activity, we have to think of this project in both daytime and nighttime, of course. And to be able to see lights and activities is a much different, you know, look and feel. Again, here's the before, kind of looking at it from the memorial. And then the after, sort of just looking at, again, the ability to traverse and walk along the harbor's edge, seeing some kiosks, you see the parking, the ability to use this soft scape, the hardscape, et cetera. Looking at a little bit more of the shingle style with a myriad of different slopes and peaks to kind of really feel like, you know, it's a, it's a project that has some breakdown in scale and also breakdown in materiality, I'm sorry, materiality. And we'll see some stone at the bottom as well as we'll see shingle and whatnot. Again, looking through the project, just this is when you kind of come up to the approach and you kind of see down Elm Street, looking east. Here's an aerial looking sort of overview, if you will, across, you can see the memorial in the lower right. This is a sort of across the memorial, if you will, again, looking at the harbor walk. And then you're able to see again sort of the peaks and valleys, be able to see through a lot of the, you know, parts of the building. And this is sort of looking from the other side, so this would be along the harbor's edge. And this is sort of looking from the other side. So this would be along the harbor's edge, looking back towards the project again, the breakdown in scale, the shingle style, part of the building even cut away to go see through the building. We want to have those different opportunities within the project. Again, just a little bit more of the, the architecture, you know, really sort of classic moves that are found quite in many places in New England, as well as Cohasset. This is sort of the Elm Street component, looking south. This is the, the west building, the east building. And here's the aerial. And then you can kind of see the whole project here now with eighty-seven, the, sort of the park, the harbor edge here with the Memorial Park, town dock, et cetera, the park down here. And then again, another view looking at the, across the memorial. So that's our last slide from the presentation. Happy to hand this over to Traffic.
Good evening, everyone. Hope, I'm sorry.
No, no, just that I just want to say, please continue.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Andrew Rarsnalt from Finasen Associates. Bear with me as I, can I share my screen, please? Thank you. So I just want to briefly go through the, the Transportation Impact Assessment Report that we put together. I'll try to keep it brief, just in the interest of time. Just to go down the basic parameters of our study, you know, the key finding is our analysis was that, under current existing conditions, there's acceptable operations for motorists, for pedestrians. In the future, we will continue with that. We will keep having acceptable operations. We did not notice any specific road safety issues within a review of the mass DOT accident reports, any of our sites, any of our, our site review. And we can accommodate the parking based on some of the national industrial standards of national industry standards that we've recorded over the past, for similar projects in the past few years. Lastly, there are lines of sight available to safely accommodate our project that we can either achieve or make achieve with a little bit of site work. I just wanted to go over our study area roadway networks. We have sidewalks, the orange dash line along one side or both sides of every of the study area roadway networks. We have relatively wide streets. I think fourteen feet is our minimum width, which is very generous. As far as trip generation, the project itself will look to generate about three hundred trips a day, about fifteen to thirty over the peak hour. So one at one car every two to four minutes. This is the parking demand calculations that we looked at, and we looked at some of the national standards for similar uses for multifamily residential units and for retail space. And we came up with for eighty-seven Elm Street, between fifteen and twenty parking spaces that we would demand throughout the, throughout the course of the day. And for one twenty-five, one twenty-four, we'd be around thirty to forty spaces. Again, that was just a brief, brief rundown of our technical report. I understand that the peer reviewer will take into it a little bit, a little bit deeper and present their findings to the board. But I just wanted to share some of our basic recommendations for you. I won't go into them in depth, but they're really just some common site safety and efficiency items. For example, we should have sidewalks linking our site to the existing roadway network, as was shown with the Harbor Walk. Some of the more specific things would be to alter the existing angle parking along the west side of Elm Street, and to consider adding some bump outs to help out pedestrians by shortening up that distance in the, in the roadway. It would also help kind of extend some of our site distances for people leaving Veterans Park, which can be kind of tight coming out of there currently. And then our last recommendation is to develop and include a TDM package to eliminate trips before they even begin. That would be by encouraging people to look towards taking a bike, non-motorized traffic, to access the site, to access their destinations. The Harbor Walk will, of course, help with that, and the bike racks as well. As far as that goes, I am, that is all I really need to present today. I'd like to pass it over to George.
Thank you, Andrew. So Madam Chair, that's our presentation tonight, which talked about the site work in the public realm, as well as traffic. There are a few questions below. I don't know how you want to handle it, or questions from the board, obviously, but we're here to answer.
I'm not, I'm not actually sure. Lauren, do you want to handle the questions? Do you want me to handle the questions and just read them out?
Madam Chair, I was going to do that for you. This is
Okay, that's right.
So I just, thank you. I just, a great majority, we've got a lot, we've got a few questions from the same people, and I just want to reiterate, we do not, from everybody, have addresses. I've asked them for addresses. Some people I know, but there is someone who just has one first name. But would you like me to just read them anyway, so they can be addressed? And then going forward, if we could have names and addresses for the record for the minutes, would be great. Would you let me just start with Katie Dugan from One Hundred Black Rock Road? First, she wanted to thank Clark for being a great member of the master plan. That was earlier, and I hope it continues to heavy lift on the master plan implementation committee. So that was one comment. Her second question is, she would like the Cohasset Harbor and team to address underground parking concepts. Is this practical giving zone and flooding of Margin Elm Street in recent storms? That's her first question.
So yes, we have, we have looked at the flooding issue. We've been dealing with a couple of contractors from Boston who have done a number of projects, for example, within the Seaport, that for the majority of buildings in the Seaport have numerous levels of underground parking, and this is just one level of underground parking.
So can I, can I just ask, your answer indicates then that more levels equals higher complexity, and this is one level and less complex?
So.
Ted, is that you? Who is that?
It's Ted Lubis on Echo. I don't know.
We've got, we've got a planet coming in. There we go. Oh, nope, you're, you're silenced. There we go. Okay.
Hi, we're having some technical issues with feedback. Sorry about that. So it's, it's, I think George's point was that there are a lot of complicated garage systems that can be designed and built, similar to ones in the Seaport and other coastal communities. What we're proposing is one below grade structure. It would be entirely floodproof, and we have a structural engineer, Vatus Invatus, who actually has designed that floodproof garage. The entire thing essentially has to be waterproofed, and it's a very common system to do. The challenge is it's very expensive to build, so it comes, comes with a premium. None of the mechanicals will be in the basement as well. And we also, if you notice, there is a ramp that actually is the only opening into the garage that can allow water into it. We would design and build a deployable, essentially, gate. And so that would prevent water to get in there in the very unusual circumstance that we did have rising tides. The underground parking is actually what provides for us to be able to provide the park there. With that, you know, parking has been expressed as a major concern, and we're working with really tight sort of confines. So the logical place is to put it down there. And again, it just comes with a significant cost premium, but it is very achievable and quite common practice.
Yeah, and this is Harrell Pandia from CBT, just, just to add to what Ted said. You know, the other, the other thing that we delineated was the fact that we have a height change to kind of account for some of the, you know, typical flooding, if you will. That's the reason why some of this is plinthed up. The lawns are sloped, the terraces are raised, and, and we're up at a certain flood elevation. So I think that's, those are all the things we are taking into consideration, so.
Would you like me to read further questions?
Please, just
All right. So we have a series of questions from Christopher McFarland and more from Katie Dugan. So Christopher McFarland lives at fifty Reservoir Road. His first question, he's a registered landscape architect and a resident, and you mentioned the View Corridor down Elm Street, but the proposed building, parking, and raised deck all interfere with the view. Why not pull building back and create a real view?
So the View Corridor down Elm Street that was required under the zoning overlay and talked about at town meeting and in the harbor plan, actually had visuals that we showed earlier, but try to pull them back up now. If Ted can share a screen.
I was gonna say, George, I can pull it up as well.
So again, the town meeting shows the area where the View Corridor would be. The harbor plan shows it. And then we've adopted exactly what the harbor plan and town meeting. The slides from the very bottom are from the harbor plan as well. Okay.
And I think just to add to what George is saying, I think the, you know, I think, I hear Chris's point, you know, in one way, but at the same time, I think, you know, there, this is such a significant relief already from what was there, you know. I think there's a balance, and that's what George had alluded to before, about the economics of creating this, as well as making sure that we are getting some sort of continuity to be able to see that. So I think another question earlier, I'd even addressed, you know, the, the importance of the village and to be, to be able to see that, that View Corridor all the way through. I think this goes a long way to do that. And the decks are flush, actually, with the retail. They're not raised any higher, so they aren't, they would be flush to grade there. So we're not, there's nothing really blocking it, if you will, as a physical structure. So just to add to that. Sorry, George.
In addition, as Harrell mentioned earlier, the lower level on the end of the building is set, is out, and the upper levels are set back, so there is more view. And in addition, if you look at the bottom of the screen, the two squares that were required under the harbor plan, we've actually gone and given significantly more view. If you look at on the proposed, to the left of our arrow, is all open space and View Corridor as well. That actually, we could have built on that area, under the harbor plan and zoning, but we've left that open. So that doesn't just create a view as you drive down, but then you just turn onto Margin Street all along there.
Yeah, and then just one more point to punctuate that piece is that the, the building itself does step back as the, as the building rises. So again, I alluded to it with the cursor when I was pointing at the presentation. It's not a vertical street wall, fully at that edge, like the building is today, almost acts like a vertical street wall. So the, the roof's sloped back and creates another aperture as your eyes wander up vertically, that the aperture widens.
I have a question from a planning board member, Tom Callahan.
Just take away my screen, because it includes my video, audio, but I, just to follow up on Chris's point, has anybody seen the materials he submitted, the questions that he had submitted to the board, his written comments? Because on this point, what he's, he's pointing out that in one of your drawings, it's showing the viewscape up close, from sort of a sidewalk perspective, rather than a car perspective, and suggesting that that hexagonal building, that's a portion of the building that's sticking out at the end, is sticking out and blocking into the viewscape if you are driving. And I just wonder if the applicant has seen that written comment, and maybe should address it point by point. He puts little boxes on a lot of your drawings with a lot of comments. It's not just this one question. And at some point, you know, I would like to see his various comments be addressed point by point.
I'd like to ask a question, which is
Did everybody get that? I don't, it's hard to know if anybody heard that.
We heard it, Tom.
Okay.
So I guess two things. One is, Tom, can you forward that information that was generated by Mr. McFarland to the architects?
I got it from Lauren.
Oh, I see. Okay.
She submitted public comments that she had, she gave me a set of public comments that she had received as of June twenty-fifth. So yes, I would love that to be made available to the applicant to address, because I think, you know, in addition to the two or three questions Chris has put up tonight, he raises a lot of interesting points about the drawings. That may be right, may be wrong, but I think we should just address it.
So this is, this is Mark Cluffer on the Team Landscape Architect. Part of, part of the Zoom world is we're not sure who's supposed to answer the question. So we have seen Chris's questions, and the next session actually is looking at landscape architecture and affordable housing, and we thought that that was a better moment to go into the deep dive of, of Chris's deep dive questions. So we're happy.
Fine. I wanted to just make sure you had them, and at some point in this process, not everything is going to be presented for tonight, but it's some point in the process, you look at those comments, have the opportunity to view them.
Yep, yep. We were planning on that for the next session. Yep.
Okay. I would like, I would like to raise a point of information with George. Back to that slide, please, which shows the three sequences, because you're using the meeting, you're, you're just, you're referring to town meeting, Cohasset Harbor Plan, and proposed. And when you're referring to the April twenty nineteen town meeting, what exactly are you describing there? What is that actual piece of information that was presented to the public? Was that the harbor plan under chapter ninety-one? Was that the overlay that was described in a general way? Can you be specific in, in clarifying that for me? And then I see Eric. I think Clark might have something. And Paul, do you have something? Paul Colery? No, okay. So George, Eric, and then Clark.
Madam Chair, the slide on the left, the April Town Meeting, I believe, was prepared by the planning board. So maybe one of the members can talk about that. There also is language in the zoning overlay that talks about the southern edge of Elm Street as the start of the View Corridor, and that's what we have, we're adhering to. So it's not just these pretty pictures of arrows, it's actually a definitive line along Elm Street that we, that's in the zoning overlay that we're here to.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. Eric?
So I think View Corridors are all well and good. I, I've been walking recently, and I, I still get beautiful views of the, of the ocean over when I go around Jerusalem Atlantic. It's a nice walk. I think more importantly, before we start wasting time here, with kind of design specifics, I think we should get into the, some more directed to the planning board, and maybe to George and Ted about the, the commercial space, because I think that's probably the most relevant matter to discuss first, because if we don't get over that hurdle, whether or not you have a forty-five degree view into the harbor, or a seventy-five degree view into the harbor, I, I think that's very much secondary, and, and not irrelevant, but, but secondary all the same. I'm looking at sixty-four thousand square feet, sixty-eight thousand square feet, and ten thousand, around ten thousand, I believe, and George or Ted, please correct me if I'm wrong, around ten thousand commercial, with the fifteen thou, is a fifteen percent requirement in the bylaw, which would put that higher than the ten thousand. So I, I think, before we start really doing a deep dive into all this other stuff, and even getting further down the, down the road on landscaping and views, and all the other stuff that's going to go along with it, I, I, I think if, if the parties I, I, I think if, if the parties don't agree to what the commercial space is going to be, all the other stuff, it may be irrelevant, right? I mean, I think that's, that's probably the biggest issue here. But I could be wrong.
Okay, Eric, if you wouldn't mind, and Clark, if you wouldn't mind, I feel like I need to go back to the public comments because that was how it was described to us is that we take those, then we go back to the planning board members. Is that all right?
That's fine, we can wrap, we can wrap up at the end.
Okay, so then let's go back to Mr. McFarland's second, third comments. And then Katie Dugan and Jen, will you proctor that?
Sure, so I think we'll just streamline a little bit. So Mr. McFarland had a question, just to outline what the 20, 20,000 foot square foot park is. And there was a series of questions and he wanted to also know about, do you own access to the town dock to allow a retailer to provide rentals? Any opportunity for you to provide improvements to make this real? And then there's some questions.
Can I just interject very quickly, just very quickly? I, I think that the town comments, we certainly want to hear 100%. We want to hear all of them, as a matter of fact, want as much input as possible. But I think in order to have a productive meeting, if landscape is on the board for the next meeting, I, I do believe that some of the questions that relate to landscaping should be deferred to the next public meeting. That's my opinion again, because otherwise I think we go down a rabbit hole of getting distracted and, and, and not really getting to the relevant points about the project itself. When we have other, you know, we, we have other markers for, to discuss these very matters that the citizens are going to want to ask questions about. But unless certain answers come up and certain, you know, resolutions are made, you know, those landscaping issues maybe are, in, in some ways are very much secondary to the more pertinent, pertinent and relevant issues at hand. And, and they're also calendar for, for, for different public meetings. And I'm not, not to nominalize them at all, because I think they're all worth hearing and worth being answered. But I think that's an important point, you know, just to raise.
So Eric, in response to your comments, this presentation included multiple materials, including some discussion of landscape. Think, I think that's why the questions are coming up. I recognize the importance of the issue of retail space. That will be addressed in a later meeting. But so I feel like just for this first meeting, let's try to get through the, the citizens' comments. Then we'll go back to the planning board. And then we'll, if this way of sort of circulating doesn't work, then we'll find another path to be able to ensure that everybody gets a chance to speak.
I agree.
All right, and so this will require that we keep track of questions that really can't be answered now. So for example, the questions about village retail, what's going on there? We actually didn't hear anything about that, so we don't have information that can we, we can respond to. There is other questions though here, for example, of Katie Dugan. There's a comment from a person named Janet. There's actually two questions about danger and bicycles. So we can, you deal with some questions and others we can't. So let's deal with the ones we can.
Just not to interrupt you, Amy, but, but, but with all due respect, there are certain issues that have more relevance to, with regards to the project's viability than others. And I'm not, I, I'm not, again, I want all questions answered and heard. But to spend time, perhaps hours worth of time, discussing matters that may very well be able to be heard at further meetings when we have a rather larger issue to tackle and discuss. In my opinion, it seems like going about things a little bit backwards. Because if we don't tackle the, the, the bigger issue out of the gates, then we all could be sitting here just kind of twiddling our thumbs a little bit. Now, I understand this, this is an initial meeting and, and we want to field, we want to field the public's comments. But there's going to be, I would hope, I would hope there's going to be dozens of public comments and, and, and which could go on for hours. But there, there are certain issues that I think as the, as the board needs to discuss with the developer before we get into minutia and other things regarding biking and park, you know, of these sorts of stuff. I think it's important because we could be wasting a lot of time otherwise.
I, I don't disagree with you, but the problem is, is that we don't have any information at this moment to actually respond to the retail question. The one person who I think could reiterate the, the thinking behind the scale of retail would be Clark. Because that was his specification in the overlay. But beyond that, we don't have anything on the table that we heard to respond to. And so we would be reaction, reacting without content. So I have Clark, okay, so this is, Clark, I'm going to let you speak. Tom, I'm going to let you speak, then I'm going to return to the citizens.
Just briefly, I mean, this is the first public hearing. And it's sort of the mile high, broad brush stroke perspective. Having, having the public make all, any and all comments are, are fine, provided that, that the applicant doesn't consider every, all of their comments from the public requirements to comply with. I mean, that's, that's, I think that's something that we, we need to, might make sense to recommend. So my, my sense would be to get a few more public comments and then have Eve Dapper and maybe our, do we have our peer reviewer make, make their preliminary comments? And then get comments from the board for next steps. And then we'll, you know, maybe we'll, we can wrap.
I think that's a good recommendation because I think that the, the questions we have, some are very precise and they can feed in well and others are not quite so. And, and so we'll, we'll log them and, and then kind of keep them, you know, in a pocket to, to review perhaps at a later date. Eve?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I, Karis, you may be able to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that it's important for the board to hear the comments from the public, but I don't think that we need to, at this public hearing, answer all of those questions. It's, and respond to every one of them. It's, it's, the, the board is, has to take those comments into consideration when making your decision. But there are lots of different comments and, and as I said earlier, I may have comments as well that the board doesn't necessarily agree with, and that's okay. Because the board needs to make the determination based on specific findings. But I don't think we need to be going back and forth with everybody's, everybody's questions. Unless there's something that the, what someone in the public asked as a clarification, that you might be able to give more information on that. But generally, their opinions on particular things are important for the board to hear, but do not need to be continually back and forth and answered. Am I right, Karis?
Yes, Madam Chair, that's exactly what I was raising my hand to say, which is the, the public comments are important. The comments that have been made into the Q and A should be recorded. And then I think that perhaps Eve and Jen and Lauren can take a look at them, group them together in, in subject matter areas and then have the applicant address them at the next appropriate meeting. And so that they become part of the record and where they're, you know, need to be addressed, they can be addressed. But this is really an opportunity for the board to ask their big picture questions about the project tonight.
Thank you, Jen?
Could we just, just for any of the, just mentioned that they can also email any questions in writing. And to please do so, I've noted their questions. But if we could please have people send us, email us comments and questions, we'll make sure that everybody gets those as well. And they can do that to ellind@cohassetma.org.
Jen, do you want to quickly summarize the, it looks like there's a grouping of the questions. Do you want us to group them just so that they get into the record? And then we'll, I'll, I'll respond to Tom and then we'll move on.
All right, so I'll just read the questions out loud in a row and then they'll, those will go into, those will be notated and then we can compile them. Does that sound good?
That sounds fine.
Okay, thank you. So Mr. McFarland asks if it's in a short period of time, the village has lost quite a few retailers as analysis of this project considered impacts to the village. Katie Dugan, I would like the CHI team to address the bike path and bike circulation. The proposed protect, projected projects would significantly increase trips for new residents at the South, North and West Buildings during the summer. There is significant bike traffic with children heading to Cohasset Sailing Club, Cohasset Yacht Club, et cetera. Janet Fogarty, who lives on Elm Street, she's made a few comments about the view corridor. She thinks the plans are great, but would, just has wanted some more clarification on that at some point. And then Mr. McFarland also mentions that it's, the, the area is difficult and dangerous for children on bicycles. Has the traffic engineer made any improvements to biking? Let me go through. And there was a question about the dock, which you already did. And then all three buildings, do all three buildings have underground parking? Is that's from Jean Patterson. Eric has, and then is a traffic assessment. Let's see, if, in the traffic assessment, you did not address the dozens of children who ride their bikes. So there's a lot of bike questions. And that's it.
Okay, so in the future, we'll work out a better way for this to go so that it, it gets more formally compartmentalized. Let's move on. I want to respond to Tom and then see if there are other comments from the board.
My, my question first was, because I'm not familiar with Zoom. These, I see 13 Q and As down here at the moment. Can they simply be printed and compiled? Or are we taking notes and trying to reinvent the wheel here? I don't know how Zoom works and whether we can just compile these or print out these Q and As.
A transcript can be generated.
Okay, great.
Okay.
And I think that, you know, what we, we've just heard is an overview presentation of the whole project, which is naturally going to generate Q and As all over the project. But we seem to have earlier tonight set a schedule that we're going to deal with certain topics at certain times. We should probably stick to that and compile these questions as they come in. They'll be coming during the week, coming at a meeting like this and get them to the applicant in advance of the next hearing on that particular topic and let them respond to them hopefully before the meeting. So we have some meaningful responses in front of us and we can all read them into the record and discuss them on the record as we need to. But as long as they can be transcribed, that's great. I wasn't aware that that was capability. I do, I do want to just say something in support of Eric that this is a mixed use project. And if I read the bylaw correctly, there is a certain requirement of a certain amount of commercial space. And I think his point is well taken that that has to be one of the threshold issues because how it's resolved may impact so many other aspects of the design of this project. So whether we, you know, again, tonight seemed to be an introductory and overview session. But I think certainly for the next session, we need to move that up to the forefront. I agree with Eric, it's not the only issue, but it is a very important issue in how this project gets designed.
So thanks for that comment. And I, I will work with Jen, Eve and Lauren. And I think they can do this themselves actually, to figure out the order of the, the content so that we address this issue in the next meeting. Is that all right?
That's what, that's what I was real, Amy, that's what I was getting at really. I, I think it's very important to prioritize the issues that we discussed. I think that every citizen should be heard and it should be entitled to get their questions answered without, without a doubt. But there are some issues that are just the way it works. It's a higher priority than next, right? So i, if, if you don't address a high priority issue, you, you won't get down to the third or fourth issue because it's just not the way it works. So I think that in order to make this productive, move things along the way in which we should, we should certainly field all the citizens' questions at, at the relevant time and at the proper meeting. I think the introduction was great and I, and I think that that was a, a great start, this whole process. But I think there should be focus on what are the big issues here? What are the priorities? And, you know, go down the line. And as we go down that line, address the questions that citizens may have and, and answer them accordingly.
So I don't disagree with you, though I think this is going to be an iterative process. And I think we're going to have certain issues that end up converging and then diverging. And, and we're going to have to address them at multiple times. But listening to you and agreeing with you, we will work to reorganize the lineup of topics so that it, it gets some of the more salient and difficult questions upfront. Lauren?
Thank you, I'd just like to add that I'd be happy to work with additional staff on ways that we can organize this best and even creating some sort of an FAQ sheet for questions that repeatedly come up. I can put together something like that, I think that would be helpful for everyone.
That's a great idea.
Thank you. So I want to circle back now, we've basically covered the questions. We will either, these will get forwarded to the, the developer and we will also keep a log of them and we'll sort them so that they can be accessible as we go through the project. I'd now like to ask the planning board members if they have some comments. And we might be thinking of wrapping up at this point.
Yep. Clark?
Clark?
Thank you. I have some mile high comments. One is on the view corridor. The, the diagram that George referenced that was on the left side of the slide is exactly what was presented to the floor of town meeting. Unfortunately, in the applicant's landscape plan, they're, they're showing a kiosk, which it, it, it is to the north of the street, but I think it will fall in the view corridor. The, the goal for the view corridor was that from that line of Elm Street, where the street hits the sidewalk, all the way to the north, that that, that be open. Now, if you have something like a kayak rental rack that's, that's, that's see-through, I think that's probably something reasonable. But, but what looks like a 10 by 20 foot box, I don't think that was what we were thinking. But I, I would like to see the, the layout, the engineering geometry of the, of the sidewalk line on Elm Street, not, not margin sidewalk, but Elm Street and how it, how it intersects with the site by the, by the applicant. So that's, that's one thing. The, number two is the, this initial presentation was, was excellent. I, I think it was thorough, compelling, it told a story. But what I'd like to, I would like to make sure of is that, that the applicant send all of his presentation materials to the planning board for inclusion in the public record.
Will do.
Okay, great. A, a third thing is the connection to the village. I think the triangle, the triangle and the Elm Street corridor need to be redesigned. There's a landscape architect that has worked on that. I've worked on that. I think that there's some other team members. And the, the goal is to have a stakeholder meeting to review what could be done and what, what might make sense in conjunction with this project and some town infrastructure changes that are going to be happening in the, in the, in the, in the foreseeable future. I just think that Lauren, I'd ask Lauren to prioritize getting, getting that moving with, with some FaceTime on, on all the stakeholders. The fourth thing I have in my, in my notes is the, the balconies. This is a detail, but the balconies look like they're glass that goes down to the floor. So you can see the whole door if somebody's in their bathrobe and, and looking out the, the, the great view. I just think it, it probably makes sense to, to toggle the, the privacy of that balcony, you know, the railing down to. you know, the railing down to a 50 to 80% transparency, maybe not 100% solid, but a 50 to 80%, not the, what looks like 100% glass. I just think that's, that could be too much information and people need a certain amount of privacy. And then the last thing is for next time, I'd like to see a specific breakdown of percentages of the commercial space, including seasonal kiosks and the allowable 5% of the 15% of flexible outdoor space, dining seating, that kind of thing. I'd like to just have you confirm the precise, exact numbers so that Eric doesn't have to kind of go through the, the numbers in his head. I just think that's going to be important for next time. Those are all my comments. Those are all my comments.
Amy, you're muted.
Sorry. Would anyone else like to speak from the planning board? Eric?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll be pretty straightforward. I don't agree with the, the necessarily, I don't necessarily agree with the site plan review and special permit. That was, that states that 22,750 square feet of the project is going to be for publicly accessible ground for commercial and non-residential use, which would equal 34.6%. So just to be candid here, I think that the importance for me, what I would place as number one priority is not meeting a 50% requirement. I also think that that's unrealistic if you know anything about village commerce. But also perhaps focusing on ways in which that there can be guarantees that this is, this will be a harbor that is for all the people and not a harbor that 10 years from now is just for the residents of, of the condominium. And that can be done in a variety of ways. It can be done as you're, as you're proposing to a certain degree. It can be done via restrictions or, or exclusive easements. And it can be done, you know, a number of ways. But I would like to see that be focused on a little bit and perhaps as that's one of the larger issues to tackle, especially considering that the bylaw does require a minimum of 15% and we would have to come to an agreement on that. I think that that is something that we should tackle first before we get into the minutia. And other than that, you know, I think you guys did a great job tonight. And I think it's going to be something that is going to benefit the town and, and really be a beneficial addition for everyone. But that is something that we definitely need to address because absent addressing that, what the lighting is or what the bike use is, is really secondary, in my opinion.
Thank you for those comments. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Tom, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I mean, there's so, there's so much to wrap your head around here. I'm trying to think of my own way of doing things, how I organize my thoughts. You know, Amy, you mentioned we didn't have some materials submitted about the percentage of commercial space. But, you know, we received a 13-page letter from Attorney Brodsky.
Can you please speak into the mic?
I'm sorry, I'm trying. We have a 13-page letter from Attorney Brodsky that covers all kinds of topics, including the commercial space. So I think we do have information that is being submitted that we can comment on. I'm just trying to think of what's the best forum and way for me to, I've been making notes and I have extensive comments about lots of different aspects of this project. But, you know, as part of the overview tonight, I, I was concerned about the site ownership because I think it's important that we do know who we're dealing with. The current property owner is not the applicant. And if there's no objection, I was given a copy of a letter from Attorney Havener to Attorney Brodsky that I assume was given to planning staff. That's where I got it. That outlines the whole issue about site ownership and I'd like to submit that to the record if we can. As far as going forward, I guess I have a question for Charis. I mean, my, my personal style would be to put a lot of comments in writing for the record. And I would like to see if that's okay as a way of doing it, submitting it on the record that people from the public can see my comments and then submitting it to the applicant for responses again. So hopefully when we go to the next meeting, that's not asking questions for the first time that night and getting an off the cuff answer, but perhaps a detailed thought out answer. It's just a disform with Zoom is different. And I just wanted to know what's the best way to, you know, to approach organizing my thoughts and comments as we go forward.
Charis, is ownership relevant?
It, it.
It is valuable, yeah.
Why is that?
So, so Eric, hang on, hang on, hang on, guys. Let's just, can I, can I answer the question before you, you start in a debate? Site control is, is what's relevant, not ownership. And, and there is sufficient evidence of site control to move forward with the application. That's my legal opinion and that's my advice to the board. If you want to have a separate conversation about that with me thereafter, I'm happy to do that offline. I don't want to do that in a public meeting. But that's my advice. In my opinion is that there's sufficient information in the record at this point to go forward with respect to site control.
And I don't disagree with that. I just that the letter that outlines that evidence, I just, I didn't know, I don't think it's part of the application materials. The application materials show us that we have a site owner and we have a site applicant. And if you look up those records, it's just a sea of LLCs upon LLCs. Not that there's anything wrong with that. It's a common development organizational tool. I just wanted in the record, the letter that actually lays it all out so that there is no question. I agree that site control is the issue and this letter lays it all out for us. It should be part of the record.
Okay, so my understanding is that the issue at hand is to ensure that all documents that come and are used to inform us of this project, two things have to happen. One, we need to get everything in advance. We need to seed slides with 48 hours of advanced receipts so that we have a chance to examine them. Number two, if people wish to submit something to the record, that needs to be set and it is expected to inform the discussion so that we do not have to discuss it potentially. That also has to be in the record so that all the planning board members and the relevant parties can review that material. That's the only way we will not end up lost in lacking information on particular topics. So that's, that would be my recommendation is that we establish a rule that basically says information has to be in by a certain period of time so that we can review it before we see the, the next chapter of the project. I have a question from the, oh, you just moved around. So please go ahead. Not, I, I, your name is not coming up. Okay, Darren.
Yeah, it's Darren. I'm from Los Angeles, same size. I know Lauren had introduced us as a peer reviewer. I just want to, I think what may be helpful is when, you know, as we're doing the peer review and putting that file together by topic, stormwater, chapter 91, different traffic and other site civil items that we've reviewed, that may be helpful for the discussion. We're planning to provide that, not by the next meeting, but we were planning by well before that August 5th meeting. So just wanted to provide that if that's helpful to the board.
Any, any information that we are expected to include in our deliberations needs to be to us so we have time to digest it. And I think Lauren, Jen and Eve can figure out what the right timeframe is so that everyone feels like they're informed and not pressed.
That's great.
Other comments from the board?
Amy, if I may.
Yes, Paul.
I don't know if it worked. Congratulations on your new position. I think you did a great job and thank you for leading us forward through these times ahead. George and Ted, I think you guys did a great job with your presentation tonight. Thank you. And I think collectively, the whole town is looking forward to working with you guys and getting this project underway, finally. And I just wanted to say thank you again to Clark for his leadership since I've been involved and just grateful to be here and part of the team. So thank you.
Thank you, Paul. That's very nice. Nice sign off. It is 9:35. Is, are there any further comments from members of the board or our professional staff? Eve, I notice.
Hey, so I, I just, I wanted to recommend to the board when you're coming up with your questions to give the, it helps to give the applicant sort of a goal to meet. If you're talking about the viewscape, instead of talking about the details of how you'd like to see the viewscape, give the, you could give the applicants what you think the goal should be and let them do the design because they do on the site. And I know everyone on the board and, and in the public have some expertise in a lot of these areas, but ultimately the applicant has to be willing to make those changes. So, you know, whether there should be enough commercial and those kinds of questions are, are right. But if we can not have quite so, and not that you did this today, but I think it makes it easy if you can ask general questions and tell them what your goals are and let them try to meet those goals. I think that might be a good way to have some iteration going forward.
Thank you. I think that's a good recommendation. Eric?
Yeah, so I'm looking at the calendar here and July 8th was site plan layout and public round traffic and circulation, which some of the citizens did ask questions about traffic and circulation. As a, as a board, we didn't address that at all. I would propose that we take a look at the, the schedule of topics and perhaps reorganize these based upon priority so that George and Ted and the rest of his group can focus upon what the priority topics are, tackle those and move down the list. And preferably, when you get closer to the end, you're just dealing with, you know, belt suspenders. We haven't talked about traffic and circulation at this meeting. So presumably that gets moved to July 15th, which is just affordable housing. August 5th is follow-up on items flagged in previous meetings, which I, I believe that there's a lot of different things to talk about. So, I mean, my proposal would be that we need a, just a general meeting about conformity with the bylaw and our thoughts and feelings about that. If there's not conformity with it, how can we work with the developer to make a project that works? And, and once we get past that, we can get into the, again, the traffic and circulation, the landscape, the lighting, all that great stuff, you know, like what that's going to make it beautiful and a, and a successful project. But absent having that conversation, which is not really addressed, I don't know when we're going to do that and, and how are we going to do that? And that's how I would think that we should proceed is, is doing a priority top down, getting over each hurdle before George and Ted even waste any more time dealing with, addressing our questions on affordable housing and, and landscape and lighting and design and all that other stuff.
Thank you for that. Ms. North?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe that Eve, one or both of the memos that Eve prepared for the board started to address some of those questions. And I think that it is probably incumbent upon the staff and the experts to take a look at those questions in the context of the application and review them for the board and be prepared to talk about them at the next meeting. I think that's a reasonable expectation for the next meeting and that really falls into sort of site plan layout and public realm. And then perhaps you might want to start getting into more detail on traffic once we finish that piece and bump the architecture, landscape, affordable housing down to August 5th as a suggestion on sort of how to, how the, how these meetings would flow. And then to the extent, Tom, I didn't get a chance to answer your question about written comments, then, then you would know that your written comments for next week would focus on site plan layout, bylaw compliance and potentially traffic and circulation. And other board members would know that as well. Does that make sense in terms of, of a proposed structure that allows the, the process to go forward and gets over that sort of initial hurdle of bylaw compliance?
So I'd like to make a comment. I think that Ms. North has offered us an interesting way forward. I would raise the following question, which relates to what Eric says. We do not have a market analysis to tell us whether or not retail will work. So we don't have the information that we would need to be able to decide one way or the other. And if we need that information and the master plan does not have anything that we can pull a tiny bit out of that, but it's not going to make any sense. So if what becomes a key ingredient is can we make retail work at a smaller scale? Can we make it a larger scale? We don't have that information. That's not a critique. It's just a statement of fact.
And it's a charge and Ted and the developers, 12,000 square feet of commercial space is not going to work down there. But what they're proposing is interesting because that's why you could do it in different ways. You could do it via, you know, respect of public use. You could do it via kiosk. You could do it, you know, just to, just to give the public the sense. Because the biggest thing that's going to happen 10 years from now is people are going to come up to you and say, hey, geez, Eric, you really, you really made a bad decision there because that's all, those are all private residences and we can't even walk on the waterfront, right? That's what's going to happen 10 years from now if the planning board does not adequately address that issue. And I think they've made a great effort towards it. And I actually think they made a realistic, realistic effort towards it. But I think that's going to be the first discussion because it, this all goes towards being able to access and use the waterfront as a community and everything else really could fall into line. That's my opinion. But, you know, I think long term, that's, that's really what everyone's going to come back on 10 years from now. And they're going to ask every, all of us. They're going to ask George, they're going to ask Ted, they're going to ask Amy, they're going to ask everyone that lives in town. You know, if it's, if it's not accessible to the citizens and able to be used to a certain degree, it's, that's something that's going to be a problem down the line. So I think that's the first discussion and maybe one of the most important.
I don't disagree with you, by the way. I myself feel that we do not have enough information about what could happen. I think that, I agree with you that the developer's done a good job of sketching out possibilities, but we don't have the economic analysis to know what could or couldn't work. In lieu of that, what you recommended is that you place certain kinds of constraints on the property going into perpetuity so that there will always be something. And I'm not sure that's the right answer either. I would, what I would like to do is to pitch this to Eve and Lauren to, you know, work with me to figure out how we could bring something together that would be information useful for the board to understand better what the, what the scale question really is because the scale question is at, at the core. And I would also say that since Clark was the person who designed the overlay, it would be important for him to be a part of that conversation as well. I recognize Tom.
Well, if I, if I could just ask either George or Adam a question, just so I understand your application. Because in Adam's letter, there's no request or any waiver from the minimum non-residential percentage requirement. So in a quick nutshell, what is making up the 15% that the bylaw requires in this proposal? Certainly the square footage in the buildings isn't adding up.
Adam can answer?
Oh, thank, thank you very much, George, and thank you, Mr. Callahan. Again, the requirement is that if we're proposing dwelling units on the ground floors of the buildings that were required to provide a minimum of 15% of the building areas dedicated to publicly accessible ground floor, commercial or non-residential excluding parking uses, including seasonal commercial uses. And we actually provided a graphic depiction of our calculations. It's a sheet, I believe, three of the plans that submitted to the planning board prepared by Cavanaro Consulting. That's correct. It's the ground area ratio plan sheet three of seven, which provides our calculations. It's the ground area ratio plan, sheet three of seven, which provides our calculations based upon our reading of the bylaw. And again, the bylaw is not limited simply to retail. In my introductory remarks, I gave a very shorthand explanation as to why we conform to that requirement. It's a much more complicated and nuanced calculation, but you have our graphic depiction with all of the square footages as to what is required and what is proposed on sheet three of seven.
So, I just want to be clear about that. So, outside space such as the park and terraces, et cetera, is included in that, and it's not just straight retail space inside of the building?
Correct, because the bylaw speaks to commercial or non-residential uses, including seasonal commercial uses. That's correct.
It also says in the next sentence of the 15% minimum, a maximum of 5% may be dedicated to outdoor seasonal use such as outdoor eating area or for seasonal temporary uses. And also, you can use some of that setback. So, you have to look at, you know, every sentence in that particular section to, to go through the calculation and understand what the requirement is.
I understand that. It seems, it seems though to me, just a first glance, that the majority of the requirement is being met by outdoor space rather than indoor retail space. I, you know, I admit to not being part of all the harder discussions and the nuances of this bylaw, but when one talks about mixed use, I don't think one contemplates a park as being mixed use. I think one contemplates an actual commercial use. But we'll get into that later, but I'm just, you know, just as an initial comment, I just wanted to be clear on what the, how the compliance with that requirement is being met. Now I understand what they're proposing, so.
And I just add two additional points, and we're happy to discuss this and provide more information. It's a reference to 5% of the total building area. And I do want to note that the bylaw does allow us to seek a waiver if the planning board thinks it's appropriate to have, you know, less commercial space.
I understand that, but you weren't asking for a waiver, that's why.
We have not. Correct.
Right. Thank you for that. Eve?
Thank you. I just also wanted to add, in the harbor overlay, section 22.5, in the uses, number one is dwelling units in a multi-family format in combination with one or more of the uses below. So, it has to have, you know, so stores or retail uses, restaurants, personal services, establishments, offices. So, that doesn't have anything to do with the percentage, but they can't just have a multifamily use and the open space. There does have to be some type of additional use. And because one of the purposes in the very front of the overlay zone talks about that it's a mixed use development and, and having some commercial uses and public access to the harbor is a fundamental purpose of the overlay zone. So, you're not going to, I'm not talking about the percentages per se, but it does have to be a mix of uses other than just open space, which they are providing, but you may or may not like the percentages.
All right. Eric?
I just would point out.
Just so I don't want to waste my time, I want to, just so I don't, first of all, Adam is a fantastic attorney, and I've known him for quite a long time, and he's a, he's a wonderful person. So, you have a great team in place. And one of the best attorneys I've ever known. But with regards to the, the, the commercial space, this is my opinion as a planning board member. I think the 15% is, is crazy. That's my opinion as a planning board member. And I understand the language allows us to move on that. I think 24 to 27 interior, I think that's something to work on, right? I just, I feel like the, the public as a planning board, that's something that could be, could be an issue down the line. I think realistically, you know, we're not, 12,000 square feet of commercial spaces, it would never happen other, considering the seasonal use that we are here, that we use here in Coasit. But it's something to take into consideration maybe for the next meeting so that we can have a game plan in place, maybe to, you know, have a, a serious discussion on how we can come to an agreement.
All right. Thank you for that, Eric. Tom?
Nothing else.
All right.
Nothing else for now.
Okay. So, here's what I would say. We are lacking in certain respects the information that we need to even offer options. But I believe that between the, the planners and the staff in town, we can take a stab at coming up with something that can frame a discussion around this issue. I personally agree that the, this, this core, which is the core for accessing and realizing the public benefit of the space is underdetermined, and we need to see if we can get more information on that as a result. I could turn to the developer and ask if you can help us figure that out or if you would like to add more specification to the situation. Because at this point, what I'm hearing is it can't be a public park. It, it could be oversized. It, it is underspecified in terms of what that's going to mean for the project. And then lacking that information, it's going to tie us up going forward. That's what I hear. George?
So, in regards to the zoning overlay, we believe we've met and exceeded the 15%. It's explained in Adam's brief. He just explained it again, and we certainly can take it up and talk about it at future meetings or with staff between now and the meetings. We have a similar concern and have all along about creating a significant amount of bricks and mortar retail space that may go vacant because of the seasonality of it. So, we feel that we've met the bylaw and in addition have created significantly more public space than is required. The comment about the public space not being there forever is simple to resolve in a number of legal, as Eric knows, that is very simple to resolve, and that's the intention. So, that's not an issue for us. In fact, everything in the 14 questions that you can, we can actually pull up the questions by just clicking on it. We can address all of them if they haven't been addressed. For example, the bike safety that both Katie's mentioned is very significant to us, and that's why we're creating this additional and large walkway around the water so they don't have to go down Marge Street and around the dangerous corner of Elm Street over to Summer and Border Street. So, we're actually improving significantly the bike and pedestrian walkway along that part of town. I'm more than happy to reach out, as we've done all along, to the butters and neighbors and residents of the town to answer the questions. I actually know Katie's, both Katie's very well, so I will reach out to them tomorrow and go through the plan with them, and we're willing to do that obviously with anybody. So, I agree with what's been said tonight in terms of answering the questions. We will do it in whichever manner you guys want us to, and we're ready and available to do that. Just, just unmuted, Amy.
Clark? I thought he wanted to say something. Lauren?
Nope.
Oh, Clark? Okay.
Yeah, no, no comment.
Oh, okay. Fine. Lauren?
Thank you. I've been listening to the conversation here and looking at our schedule and redlining up a storm. And my question to the board is, originally, we were planning to continue and meet a week from tonight with that and all of the information that we need, all the information the board is looking for, the back and forth with peer review and getting information, people in time. I'm wondering if we want to continue on August 5th instead. That way, we would, that we could address regular planning board material on the 15th. We still have a meeting, and August 5th, we could follow up on bylaw compliance, follow up on site plan, traffic and circulation in more detail, and talk about commercial space. That, we, that would give us time to have our full peer review, and we could begin to have the response from the applicant as well, and would give more time for everybody to digest all of this. So, I pose that to the board to consider.
I personally think that's a good solution. I don't think that in a week's time or in two weeks' time, we're going to be completely prepared. So, this would make a, a better gesture to being able to address the issues.
I'll share my screen of what this current red line looks like so you can get a better idea. It's the wrong part on the screen. Sorry, hold on. Give it one minute, please. No, don't want to use that. Give it a moment, please.
What's this project? I don't know if anybody heard that.
All right.
Is the, is the idea, Lauren, that on August 5th, this would be the only matter we would be discussing? We would be devoting the whole two, three hours to this project?
Yes, we can arrange for that. Well, with the exception that we did continue a hearing earlier to 6:45, noting that that is subject to further discussion, that may, we may consider requesting withdrawal for that applicant depending on what their plan is. But other than that continuation that we've stated, this would be the topics.
Is there a way for us to move that meeting that we continued? Because it does seem like that front end of the meeting today took a lot of our time. So, if we could have a day where we just focus on this, I think it would be a lot more effective.
What I'm seeing for the fifth is we would have that. It might get continued a fifth or sixth time. It would take, I don't know how long it would take, but I'm hearing that it's the possible, possibility we would have from 7 o'clock until 9:30 just to deal with this project.
Can we ask George or Ted for their input? I presume you guys have been down this, this road before.
This highway with so many things running around, yes. Obviously, this is a very complicated project. Obviously, it's a very important project for the town. So, we will do obviously whatever the board wants us to do. A lot of the questions that came up at the end of this conversation tonight about compliance, about public realm, even the bicycles, we, we have studied those and we can, when asked and given the chance, we can give answers to. I think the, the commercial space issue is probably the way that you as Tom and Eric are attorneys and, and Adam are attorneys, that's probably something that you guys can sit and bicker over for, to the rest of your lives, how, how it works. I think Amy's concept about looking at a study for the retail is very, probably a good way to look at it too. And we already have spoken with a number of commercial brokers about it. And I will tell you now, but we'll go into more detail, that none of them think that it's sustainable for really any retail down there. We disagree. That's where we came up with the idea of the seasonal kiosks, which by the way, don't have to be retail kiosks. They could be CSCR showing off what they've done on Gulf River for the summer, and they could be CMI having a, selling t-shirts and raising money. So, they don't have to be the standard retail that we're all used to. And obviously, the last three, four months of retail has taken on a different connotation. So, I will tell you, overall, we feel that the public access and the public park is so much more important to us and to everybody in town that we've talked to. Again, we didn't design this in a bubble. We've been talking to people for two years about this. And I think the neighbors are going to weigh in heavily about the commercial space. I believe they already have. I think there's been a number of letters that came in the package that they talked about it. So, I think that's the only issue that we can probably have a different opinions on, but I also believe we can come to consensus on it. All the other things we're willing to talk about and can, and can address and answer.
And that's the one that's going to require us to come to an agreement. All the others, because that's a bylaw concession that we're going to have to make. Off the bylaw, we have the right to agree to bend on that 15%. But as the bylaw states, it's 15. So, that's what I'm saying. I, I think that if we get over that hurdle, now we have a smoother path towards success, you know, because whereas if we tackle that at the end and everything blows up, you know, it's all for naught. It, it is basically where my position on things. And I, and I do think that, I actually agree with you on, on a lot of what you're saying about commercial space, personal use down there, you know, it being where it is. But, you know, I think it's important because I think once you get past that, a lot of the other stuff aside from parking, it may be traffic, you know, is something everybody can reasonably work through.
Okay. So, if we move our next meeting to August 5th, that gives us a little bit of time to try to sort this, this key issue out, and it's got the pieces around it that I think are going to also take more time in a discussion. I would ask that Eve and Lauren and myself and Clark and the, the developer figure out a way to address this in a, in the public hearing so that the public feels secure, that they understand what's being done, and if a trade-off is going to take place, it's really obvious why we're doing it. We don't want to end up with a situation in which people feel like we were vague or we were inexact and that produced an outcome that they weren't satisfied with. And I agree with George. I think that, that a positive outcome can happen, but I think we have an absence of information. And I think we also haven't moved anything around yet, right? I mean, we've got a, we've got a design, but you know, a lot of the time, projects, designs change. But let's just take up the question of the 15%. And I, and I've asked that Lauren and Eve and Clark, myself, George or his representative get together and talk about this in a manner that gets us forward. I don't know how else we can do it. And we might actually, would we have too many people from the board? I think not.
Just ask me. I've been down at the Village for nine years now.
Yeah. Madam Chair, you'd have to.
It's a lot of business.
You'd have to leave it to two board members.
Right.
And I would just note if the applicant's going to bring their counsel, you should probably have your counsel there as well. So, which is fine. Adam and I can, you know, work with you on that particular piece if you have questions or issues and about what the bylaw means. So, feel free.
All right. So, how, how does everybody feel about that at this moment at 10:02 PM?
Why don't we make a motion to continue to the, the 5th of August at a time certain?
Thank you for that. Would you like, can I codify that and say that's a motion?
Yeah. What time?
6:30 as planned, right?
My concern, Madam Chair, is that August 5th, we have continued 8 James Lane and 2 Pleasant Street to 6:45. Not necessarily mean that we need to start that on time. It just would likely go very late if it does continue.
Those, those two, you could reconsider that continuance and continue them to a different date and time if you wanted to. You could, you could take up a motion to reconsider that.
That's a good suggestion. I'm the biggest baby on this list when it comes to meetings. So, even I could do a couple of meetings in August. I mean, it wouldn't be the end of the world, and I, and I'm usually the one that's always planning.
So, is, is the reason why we're not saying July 15th to reconsider continuing James Lane to July 15th? Is, is there a reason that we're not thinking of that? And is, I mean, we're going to be asked to do 580 Jerusalem Road. That's going to come in too. So, I, we've given up on the, on the new schedule, we've given up July 15th. Could we schedule James Lane and the 580 that time?
We don't have enough time for advertising requirements for the new large home review, but that can be, since it hasn't been scheduled, we can, we can navigate. Yes, we, we just need to continue 8 James Lane and 2 Pleasant Street. But as Charis just suggested, if the board would wish to reconsider, we can, we can continue that to July 15th, and I can have a word with the applicant on how, how to proceed from there. And then we would dedicate the 5th to this 12487 Elm Street application.
I would like to ask somebody to make a motion to please do this.
So, moved.
Seconded.
All in favor, please say your name.
Paul Gray.
Hi.
Eric, Eric. Eric Potter, aye.
Clark Brewer, aye.
Amy Glassmeyer, aye. Motion passes. All right, so we have reestablished the July 15th. We've moved James Lane to that date. Lauren will speak with the owner about the suitability of that time. We will leave completely to itself August 5th for the continuance of the discussion of the harbor business overlay review.
Can I just interject again? And there'll probably be a theme here where you hear my voice too much, so. But I have two young kids in town, so I'm gonna be around for a while. Is there any way to throw another meeting in August? Because you know for a fact what's gonna happen at the August 5th meeting? Everyone's gonna talk for two hours about commercial space. And that's gonna be, that's gonna take care of that whole meeting. You know for a fact it's gonna happen.
Okay, so what you're asking, Eric, is that we need to schedule another meeting in August?
We only have one right now, so I would say we could probably do two.
Well, what we can do is schedule a meeting, but if it turns out that people are going to be out of town, then we'll have to cancel it.
Could I suggest that, given the questions and follow-up from this meeting and needing the time, you know, once a month may make more sense? Because there may be additional follow-up and analysis needed. So you come back in September, and then maybe, once all that analysis is done, you schedule twice in September, and then maybe you schedule twice in October to get done. August is a tough month, so you may, you may need time. Just a thought.
Can we ask the developer? She seemed ready to rock and roll.
That's because I can't leave town, right? No place to go. Again, we're, we're fine with more meetings, we're fine with less meetings. For example, if you wanted to use the July 15th just for traffic, because we can address that in a half hour, an hour maximum, and/or more of the site plan, so.
I would. So, well, that, thank you very much. That will be, that would be helpful to give us space. I don't think, Eric, we have to answer this question now to have another meeting. But what I would say is that I think bylaw compliance, commercial space, site plan, layout in public realm, and then traffic and circulation, it should be in that order, because I think commercial space and bylaw compliance are connected.
Right.
All right, so we have, we don't need to do any more motions. We've agreed to move things around and leave a meeting August 5th for the project. I believe our business is done this evening.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Sorry, I just wanted to say one thing. We have, I mean, I'm not suggesting that we start listening at the moment, but Darren from Weston Sampson has done some of the analysis of the bylaw and is part of their peer review, and that part was done. And originally, we had hoped that we would get to be able to hear what they have gotten to so far, so they could let the developer know the kinds of issues that they're seeing. We're obviously not gonna do that, but I don't think we necessarily are starting from scratch going forward when you're asking the staff to do this. I think Darren has some of that information already in his pocket, and we can have a conversation with him about how he sees the same kind of conversation that we've been having. He just didn't get a chance to speak today.
All right, so then we'll put together a Zoom meeting of the relevant parties to discuss the materials that we have at hand. I think that's a good idea, because then we would be able to see things that we might not, right now, have identified. But we will, based on the conversation that we have, and that might help us for the August 5th meeting. Sorry, you all look like you're ready to pop. Sorry, but we should laugh sometimes. Okay.
I think that's right.
You know, it's just like, it's so weird. It's like all these televisions, I don't know who to look at, oh my God. Okay, so that's it. Thank you very much. I believe we are in a situation where the meeting could come to an end with somebody like a motion to adjourn.
Well, you need a motion to continue first, right?
Right, we, sorry, we do.
We did.
I thought we did that. Okay, we need a motion to continue the public hearing on the harbor plan business overlay. Do I see a motion?
Seconded.
Please state your name and vote.
And I'm sorry, that needs to be continued to a specific date and time.
Oh, so it's like, the date and time is August 5th at 6:30 PM?
Do we need another second?
Yeah, let's roll it back and say we have a second. Eric, would you like to resecond? He waved his hand.
Yeah, I second.
Okay, call for the question, everybody. Paul Grady?
Aye.
Eric Potter?
Aye.
Clark Brewer?
Aye.
Amy Glassmeyer?
Aye.
Tom Callahan?
Aye.
The motion passes. Jen?
I'm sorry, I guess maybe I blacked out, but did we continue? Did we reconsider the vote for 8 James Lane? Okay.
Yes. That did get voted.
I'm gonna have to get better at this stuff, this is hard.
You're doing a great job for your first time around. I mean, geez.
No, I'm gonna go upstairs and cry. So I think we're done. Are we done? We're done.
So we file a motion to adjourn?
Yes, we just didn't, oh, okay.
Bye, guys. Have a good week.
Like, I'd like to have someone make a motion to adjourn.
Second, aye.
Everyone, please call out their name and vote.
Paul Grady.
Tom? Eric?
Got me, aye.
Clark Brewer?
Clark Brewer, aye.
Amy Glassmeyer, aye. The motion passes, let's close it up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all, good night.
Thank you.